Okay, we will come to order for the regular meeting July 26th Newport Beach City Council. There is no closed session report. We were in closed session. We dealt with real property negotiator, negotiation, instructions to our negotiator, which is not a reportable item. City Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, let's please stand. We'll have a pledge of allegiance and invocation as well. Councilman Daigle, do you want to lead us, please?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an invocation from Pastor Jim McCannan of the Newport Harbor Lutheran Church.
Good evening. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for another day of life and the many common blessings we have, a place to sleep, food to eat, and people who care about us. We're thankful for our elected leaders of this community. May there be a spirit of community and unity here in the discussion. May decisions be made that are in the best interest of all of our people, visitors and residents. We're thankful for this beautiful place, for the material wealth we have, and may our decision-making reflect the heart of our community, which loves all people. In your embrace that is eternal and forever, we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor. City Clerk?
Presentation, we have an Arts Foundation presentation of check.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Kerwin Rockefeller. I'm chairman of the Newport Beach Arts Commission, and we're here tonight for a check presentation from the Newport Beach Arts Foundation to the city. Before we get to the actual check presentation, a couple of points if I may. First of all, I'd like to invite my fellow commissioners who are here this evening to stand so I may introduce them to you. Robin Grant and Wendy Brooks are here this evening with us. Second, we'd like to extend a personal invitation to each one of the city council members and your families to please join us one week from tonight, Tuesday, August 2nd, for our second of four summer concerts in the Park Series. We're honored to be hosting the Russian National Orchestra Wind Quintet. It'll be taking place at 6:30 in Grant Howard Park in Corona del Mar. This free concert again is the second of four in our annual summer concert series. It's free and open to the public. I know I for one can't think of a better way to spend a summer evening, midsummer nights than in the park, under the stars with beautiful classical music. Third, we'd like to also extend our invitation to you and your families to join us on Saturday, August 6th, and Sunday, August 7th, also in Grant Howard Park in Corona del Mar, for our free Shakespeare By the Sea performances. This year we'll be enjoying the Merry Wives of Windsor, which many of us on the Arts Commission call the original Desperate Housewives, and on Sunday, Othello. These performances are made possible by the generous support of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. Tonight's check is specifically designated for these Shakespeare performances. And now onto the check presentation itself. Mayor Heffernan, would you be so kind as to join me down here at the podium to accept the check on behalf of the city? The check will be presented by Lila Crispin, president of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. Lila.
Thank you, Kerwin. Members of the council, I'm very pleased to do this. I'd like to be joined by my vice president Lynn Velasco, and for your amazement and amusement. Oh, okay. Here's a wonderful poster that we'd like to leave. Thank you. And...
You can walk the streets like that, John. You'd be a billboard.
If I may, members of the council and Mayor Heffernan, I'd like to thank all the members of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. We're a very, very small group. There are very few people, and I'd like to name them, even those that aren't here. The members that are here, I would appreciate if they would stand. Karen Gutierrez King, our past president, Michelle Jepko, our secretary, she is here today, Eve Bousard, Patty McBride, Evelyn Craigie, Madeline Young, Lynn Velasco, we've met, Lisa Gorbate, Leslie Feivelman, and our newest member Patricia Jorgensen. So we're small but mighty, and it's with a great deal of pleasure that we present to the city the $7,000 that we've worked so very hard to raise. So all of you out there, please join us and raise any more funds, and then we'll have more wonderful events in the park and the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[636.82][636.82](applause)
I wish all the public to attend Shakespeare By the Sea. Be great. Thank you.
I have some, I have some flyers here that I'm going to...
Thank you very much. City appreciates the money, but more importantly, appreciates your work, because the money can come often more easily than the effort to produce all the background and detail that it takes to actually put these events on. Thank you again. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card for those wishing to address the council. The card is used to assist in the preparation of the minutes, and the completion of it is optional. Completed cards should be placed in the box at the podium. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report. And while I have an open mic, I'm going to take this opportunity to let you know that as of today at 4 o'clock with our study session, thanks to the help of council member Daigle and the support of the rest of the council, the council meetings are now live. They're being streamed on the city's website. And I want to introduce to you Emery Jones. He is the CFO from Granicus, who is the company who is hosting our materials. If, this was our first day with training. This is, we're up and running right now. He's here to help us troubleshoot, work out any issues that there may be. Well, there may be some conversations going on between us here. He may have to leave periodically and come back and forth. We'll try to be as least disruptive as we can, but just so that you know what's going on. And the meetings will all be shown live. They can all, they're all archived, so you'll be able to go back at, you know, 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning if you want to watch what happened, and pull that up on your computer and watch it.
Okay, just for us older, video streaming means what exactly versus TV, Channel 3?
Well, basically, it's going to be the same thing that you see on Channel 3 as far as the picture and everything like that, but once we publish the minutes that go to it, you can jump around to the exact spots that you want to.
My specific question is, to get to video streaming, you go on your computer, and you log on to the city site, and then it gets you to the specific site.
That's correct.
So either tonight you could be watching city council on Channel 3 or city council on a computer screen. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's good. That's great. Thank you for coming. Thank you for starting us off. Okay, I'm going to start with, you know, pulling the council here is what they might want to announce or have on a future agenda. Mr. Nichols?
I'm going to pass on that.
Okay. Councilman Daigle?
Yes, thank you Mayor Heffernan. The network is set up so the pipes are in place, and we now have around the world and around the clock connectivity. And technology is something of great interest to me. I think during the 21st century, it was something that will really shape our society and shape our governance. Now that the city is in the position of having this network, kind of the next step is the content that will be running on the website and what it is that will be streaming. And so I think it might be timely, perhaps at a study session, to have a discussion on protocols as far as what will be streaming and the production of any programming.
Mr. Blutau, you've noted that? Good. Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, and I would ask, it was never brought up before. I think Pick-a-Pat, we used to have, I'd like to have a protocol for council involvement in that program. I think a couple years ago, the mayor usurped one of our employees and got, I think, undue publicity, and I think we need to discuss the protocol of that and perhaps if there's going to be councilmatic involvement, equal time.
Good. You can have mine. Okay, Mr. Webb?
Your honor, can I, before you get off on that subject, can I, as far as setting up the protocols, would that be something that you would want to go to the website review committee to start with before it came to council?
That is a good suggestion, I think, yeah.
Was that a logical place to refine it and define it and then bring it to us?
I would think so.
Rather than do it...
Just for the website, or this is a, this is on our...
Well, it's on the website. It's all shown on the web.
Well, I think both need to be addressed, the public streaming and TV.
Good. Okay.
And then as far as what's happening right now, just so you're aware, if you went in right now and clicked on to the live feed, it's currently plugged into Channel 3, so at a time when there isn't a live council meeting going on, you're going to see the regular programming that's on Channel 3 right now, if you wanted to watch live. So you would see the Pick-a-Pats, you would see the rolling list of council members that serve on various committees as far, and committee members and that type of thing.
All right, but what happens if somebody gets, wants, have a seat at midnight tonight? We're all home. What do they get to see? The Pick-a-Pat or they get to see...
Well, if they went to a live feed, they would see Pick-a-Pat. They would need to go to the archive. At that point, they would go to the archive version of the night feed.
All right, so they can. So somebody can go after the meeting, go to the archive and see the meeting verbatim, start to finish.
Absolutely.
Is Pick-a-Pat on at midnight?
That's when John does that.
8:30 Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, on Channel 3 and Channel 30.
Mr. Webb, this'll be a long night, I can tell.
And Todd, you can have my spot in Pick-a-Pat.
Mayor Heffernan and I had the opportunity to travel with the Sister City Association to Antibes, France, to represent the city in, I don't know if you'd call it negotiations, but at least we met with their Sister City Association and discussed how the two cities might broaden their both cultural and student activities. We have, we were requested to look into, say, the opportunity of expanding the U.S. Sailing Program, of bringing a crew of Antibes sailors here to train with a group of Newport Beach sailors and put on some sort of regatta over a one to two week period, and then reciprocate the next year the other direction. They were also interested in the possibility of looking at how a student music program might be expanded to where you might be able to get some of the students within the Newport Beach school system, with the Antibes school system where they might communicate over the internet, practicing, bringing forth some musical pieces, and then getting together on an exchange basis in the summertime to where they could actually perform, as well as a number of other opportunities. And primarily what we talked about is the opportunities related to exchanging students. There was also an interest to see if we could work with perhaps some of our community college districts on some intern programs too. So it was a very meaningful set of goals that we discussed in trying to look at how we can take a city that's very similar in a lot of aspects to Newport Beach but is in France. They have a harbor with, they kind of exceed the length of some of the boats in our harbor. There's several 250-foot private crafts there, but they are a little older than us. They're 2,800 years old, and we're only 100 years old. But they have a nice peninsula, beautiful beaches, and some really nice houses, a lot of history, and we were able to also attend a session of the Jazz Festival that they have there too. So I think that it was a wonderful experience for me to be involved with, and I'm sure the mayor may have a thing to say about too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosansky?
Well, I'll also talk about a wonderful experience I had this week. I attended a centennial celebration fundraiser for the float that was put on on the, I don't know what you call it, the Majestic, which is one of the party boats out in the harbor. And basically what it was, is a bachelor auction. There was about 400 women, single women. I don't think I've ever been around that many single women in one place and at one time and one location. I'd say they were probably 25 to 85 years old, believe it or not, and the 85-year-old did win a bachelor. So, that guy, he took one for the city as far as I'm concerned. But in any event, it was a great time. I think the women had a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun there, and they raised approximately $15,000 towards the float. So, and I think they had another thousand women that wanted to come, but they were just booked. So hats off to the recreation department, who I think put this on, and we got a little bit more money in our centennial kitty. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, I have something. That would be, I would like a survey of slip fee rentals done in comparison to our Babo Yacht Basin, see whether we're at market. I've got a boat in the harbor, and I think we're undermarket. My boat's not there because there's no room for it, and sometimes there's, you have no vacancy because your rent is cheap. I just want to make sure ours is in market. Okay, City Clerk? Oh, no, one more thing. Antibes, for those, and I didn't know three weeks ago where it was, Antibes is located on the southern coast of France. Monaco, you're going east to west. Monaco, Nice, Antibes, and Cannes. So it's a beautiful area of the southern French coast, a lot of money. That's where Paul Allen will dock his boat when it's in the Caribbean, 400 feet, because Chowie keeps his there. Very wealthy, very wooded area, much like Carmel. And the upshot of all this is that their city delegation is coming to visit us, starting the last Monday in November after Thanksgiving. It'll be for five, six days, and we're going to, we're going to host them as well. And the last thing, which is surprising, they have a 49-member city council. You know, so that's just, and they still get, and they still get a lot done, and they were very hospitable to a...
15 mayor pro temps.
Yeah, 15 mayor pro temps. So I mean, you can imagine what their meetings are like. And one last thing, we were, we happened to be in a McDonald's at a new time lunch on the day that the countries were going to give two minutes, two minutes of silence because of London bombing. And this was unrehearsed. We just happened to be there, and there had to be 75 people in this restaurant at the appointed hour, which is 1 o'clock French time. The manager flips the lights off, stands on a chair, and in English and in French announces that we're going to, you know, be quiet, and we're going to observe the moment of this minute of silence, and everybody did, without a hesitation, which I thought was remarkable. I kind of wondered whether that might happen on PCH at our McDonald's or not, because it was a remarkable display of, you know, of focus for that whole crew to do this, and it was very well received, along with the rest of the French hospitality force. Thanks again.
I just want to know what you were doing at a McDonald's in France.
Well, because if you're, if you're a, if you're a member of the, of the Sister City, you, they delegate, you know, so there's, you're on the bus, and that's where it stops, that's, that's what happens. And they treat us very well. We just happened to be at a McDonald's, and I think there might have been a relationship between the owner of the McDonald's and who was in the front of the bus, so. City Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 12, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, we'll start with the city council members. Any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda? We'll start with you, Mr. Nichols, again.
I'm gonna pass. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Daigle?
I had a, just clarification on the minutes at the appropriate time.
This will be the thing.
On page 329, the second paragraph, I'd asked for audit of Newport Coast funds. Actually, it was a balance of the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency Fund, currently controlled by the county, and wanted to know the financial characteristics of that fund, and it's something that we're actually taking up now in the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Is that correction noted? It is, good. Is anything else to pull? Good. Okay, Councilman Ridgeway?
Yeah, I have nothing to pull. I will ask that the record reflect. I will abstain on item 3.
Okay, so noted. Councilman Webb? Councilman Rosansky?
I have nothing to pull, but I'll also be abstaining on item 3.
Okay, Councilman Selich?
I have nothing to pull, but just a question. Should I abstain on the minutes of June 21st and says only on the council for half the meeting?
If you want to, let's do it.
Okay, I'll abstain on that then.
That's fine. Okay, we have a record of all those abstentions, and, okay, we have no items pulled, as I understand it. We have abstentions on the minutes.
John?
Okay, I'll, but I'm clear on what the council has said. Oh, Mr. Nichols?
My question is, is may I vote on the condominium ordinance here? Because I think this is the second vote on that.
That's a good point.
And I did read through it, but I did not...
He was not here for the meeting, on the initial reading of the ordinance. Can he vote now on the second reading?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes, because this is a separate action. This is on adoption.
All right. Good, all right. We have, the council's been polled. Okay, we're going to open this up to the public. Any items you want to pull on the consent agenda? Now's the time to come up. Okay, Mr. Hildreth?
Jim Hildreth, I'd like to have item number 4, please.
Okay, item 4. Anybody else from the public wants to pull anything from the consent agenda, which is items?
1 through 12.
1 through 12, now's the time. Okay, no one coming up? We'll close the, that portion? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move affirmative action on the consent calendar, which is item 1 through 12, except for item 4.
With the noted abstentions, I'll second that.
And the correction to the minutes.
And the correction to the minutes. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
City Clerk?
Item number 13, Title 14 Amendments Incorporating Water and Sewer Fee Increases.
Are we going to have a staff report, Mr. Blutau?
I thought we were going to have a staff report. We'll be glad to provide you one. Mr. Mayor, the last city council meeting a month ago, council gave first reading to the ordinance that is contained in your agenda that would raise both sewer and water fee. Those rates would increase based upon volume, and they would also increase based upon connections. So if you want me to review what those changes would be, I'll be glad to do that. But basically, the reason why staff is coming forward to the city council with this recommendation is because the charges to the city are increasing. The city has groundwater from the Orange County Water District, and we also import water from the Municipal Water District of Orange County, or MODOC as we call it. Fees for purchasing that water are increasing to us. So basically, what we're doing is trying to pass these fees on to the customer. And if these fees aren't increased to the amount that is being recommended and that council gave first reading to at the last meeting, then we're going to be eating into our reserves, and over time, we won't have any reserves.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure as to going, having an explanation of the rates again? Anybody want it?
Have what, John?
Others to explain how the rates are going to go.
No, actually, we had it last time. I'll just make, I'll make a motion for approval. I know it needs to be come to the public, but...
Okay, any, any questions of council to staff? Okay, I'm going to open up to the public. Do you have any comment on this item? Mr. Hildreth?
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. One comment I'd like to make is that I would like to see people's, the city should be stressing that people are conservative on their water, so they're not just wasting... should be stressing that people are conservative on their water, so they're not just wasting it. That there should be something presented to the city to try to curb that, as well as, well, to remind them that a broom is better than, at times, better than a hose of water. So, as for the fees, I, if the city says it's necessary, but I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment on this item? Item 13? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to city council.
The shower with a friend. It's okay.
Maybe I'm not gonna give you my additional time.
Safe water.
Okay, there's been a motion made, second, please vote.
Motion carries. Item number 14, Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian Series 2005 Healthcare Facility Revenue Bonds.
Dennis Denner, the finance director, will provide this, Dan, for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a request from Hoag Hospital Memorial Presbyterian to assist them in issuing what are called hospital revenue conduit bonds. These are bonds in the amount of $200 million. These are bonds that the city would issue on, on the hospital's behalf. Since we're a nonprofit and we can issue these under the city charter provisions, we can issue those bonds on a tax-free basis. And it's to their benefit to achieve a more favorable interest rate. We were, we've done this for the hospital four times in the past. We did it in 1984, 1992, '96, and '99. And in each of those instances, the, the hospital paid the city a fee for its assistance. The fee in '84 was $250,000. On the other three issues, it was $200,000. And they're proposing once again this year to pay the city a $200,000 fee for the, for our assistance. I want to stress that these are obligations of the hospital. It's not an obligation of the city. We have no responsibility for the debt service on these bonds. And it, it won't affect the city's bond rating in any, in any way. I expect them to be here. I didn't, I didn't see them when I came up here this, just now, but they will be here to answer any questions.
Well, the agendas move in uncharacteristically quick fashion. Any question for the council staff? Yes, Mr. Nichols?
You say we have no liability on this. I understand that there's, there's been nobody that's, I mean, if, no default has occurred in such bonds, though. So, I, isn't there an inherent liability of, I mean, we've been very fortunate, I think there are particularly worthy proponent here that we would be sponsoring. But I, but my question is, there is a liability, to my understanding, on this, if we issue...
There really is not a city liability. One of the items before this evening is to adopt the loan agreement, and I would refer you to section 5.3. It's on page 10 of the loan agreement. And it says, "The city shall not be obligated to pay the principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds, except from payments received here under obligation number 14 and other revenues." And those revenues are strictly from the hospital. So, the only, the bondholders are the ones that are at risk if this, if the hospital fails to make those revenue payments to the city to pay the debt service. So, there's no obligation on the part of the city.
But is there any security or anything like that, that they're, that they must provide?
No, it's just backed by the revenues of the hospital.
Don't they also have insurance there?
Yes.
They've insured...
So, this is an insured, they are providing insurance on that? Thank you.
Dennis, we probably also want to say, and I think it was the budget committee yesterday that...
Yes, I should have mentioned that the, we met yesterday morning, the finance, city council finance committee, which is Mayor Heffernan, Councilmember Dagle, and Councilman Rosansky, met to discuss this issue and they voted, their recommendation was to approve the staff recommendation.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm gonna open the public comment. Before I do, I'm gonna read the script, because this is what we do as part of the has-to-be of the record. This is a public hearing to consider the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for the purpose of financing the construction and equipment of health facilities known as Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian, located in the city of Newport Beach, California. Public hearing regarding the financing is required by federal tax law. Public hearing is now open. We'll now hear from any person who wishes to speak about the proposed financing. Does anyone wish to speak about the financing and this proposed agenda, rather, this agenda item and the motion to approve it?
Mayor Heffernan, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Hamilton. I live at 21562nd Street. I work in public finance and I'm not here with respect to this item, but I happen to have some expertise here. And I'm just, wanted to comment that typically, the market pays issuers, as the city is in this case, five, between five basis points and 12 and a half is usually the average. It sounds like this is 10 basis points, or 0.1% of the bond issuance. So, that seems like it's within the scope of market and I would support it. But I would also ask whether the city has a stated fee in its, in its laws that, that people like Hoag can refer to for a baseline, or if this is just kind of a, you know, a deal-by-deal basis. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I don't think we do have a baseline schedule to that extent. And what we did at the finance committee, I mean, we, we, we had input from other agencies and looked at what they charged for comparable issuances for other type of private nonprofit. And our, ours was in the range, as you've indicated as well. Any other, any public comment? City attorney, you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify that authorizing ordinance does provide that the city should not have any expense for issuing these bonds and that we would get reimbursed for all expenses that would be related to that, to the issuance and to the, any administration.
And that is in addition to the $200,000 or as part of?
No, that, I think that was part of the...
So, the $200,000 is inclusive of those internal costs as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on this? Okay. Well, let me, let me ask, were any written comments received by the city clerk regarding this agenda item?
No, there was not.
Okay, the, the public hearing is now closed. I'll bring it back to council.
Move the action. Second?
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries. Item number 15, General Plan Amendment Number 2004-006 and Code Amendment Number 2005-006, Master Development Corporation Office Expansion, 4200 Von Karman Avenue.
Who's gonna give the, Mr. Bludow, who's gonna be in the staff report here?
Rosalyn Hung, the associate planner, will provide the staff report. She is the one who wrote the staff report.
All right, and when you do so, maybe you can give us a little background of why such a small item is, I mean, as in terms of square foot, expansion is before us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The application before you tonight is a request from Master Development Corporation to increase the development allocation in the Coal Center Newport Office Site B in order to replace the existing one-story office building with a new two-story office building located at 4200 Von Karman Avenue. The request includes a general plan amendment to the land use element to increase the maximum allowable gross office area by 1,500 square feet, and an amendment to the Coal Center Plan Community text by 1,367 net square feet. The reason for the request is that because in the general plan, land use element, specifically in the statistical area L4, the built-out is at the maximum. So, therefore, we cannot accommodate the new development in term of increase in square footage as the applicant requested. So, does in the, the PC, the PC text also put a cap into the square footage that would not allow the applicant to go forward with the project without the amendment request.
And does that mean, in that result of that, a general plan amendment has to be approved by the city council?
Yes, sir.
And that's why it's before us?
Yes.
Thank you.
The planning commission consider and recommend approval of the request to the city council at their July 7th meeting. The draft resolution and ordinance with all the appropriate attachments are included in the staff report for the city council to consider tonight.
Let me ask a question. How does this fit within the green light ordinance? I might as well ask it, because I know it's in your staff report.
With regard to the green light, it is very minimal. We've been tracking that for quite some time. And this is the third amendment to the, the statistical L4, and it's considered to be very minimal, as in stated in the staff report. The AM peak hours trip, including all the previous...
That's fine, but in other words, it doesn't trip any of the requirements.
No, sir. It's very minimum. It's 19.5 and then at 27.2...
Right, but even considering the cumulative prior ones and...
Yes, sir.
All of that complicated part of green light ordinance. Okay, questions from...
One question?
Mr. Councilman Webb?
In, in looking at the drawings, it looks like they are also adding five parking spaces to, to handle the increase in square footage. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that they will meet all the parking requirements?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Nichols?
I had a question philosophically here. When we've had other, when Irvine has wanted to increase a block with more buildable, they've sometimes transferred it from another block. And my question is, is when does that apply? Or is that a co-applicable way of getting more buildable to what we're doing here? Here, we're modifying the maximum and increasing it versus the other, where we're transferring buildable from one area to another. And I believe there's buildable in the center, and I want to know when we do this and when we do that and why we do each.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could hazard a guess, I, I have some history on this, as I do believe Mr. Selich does. When the Irvine Company owns property within the Irvine Center, they have the ability to transfer. If you're a third party, and I say twice in Newport Center, twice. The Animal Hospital is the one that I remember the best. They needed about 1,200 square feet. And there was approved in that block of Newport Center about a million square feet. And yet, all they needed was 1,200 square feet. They had no ability to negotiate a transfer because the Irvine Company owned the other properties. So, they had to come in for an increase in the plan text or the PC text and the general plan. And there was one other, and I, I can't remember, but I know there were two during my, my stint. And we did approve that, by the way.
I, I do understand that, but my question is, is why hasn't this person been required to go to the Irvine Company and, and buy those rights?
Right, this is the coal company.
Okay, the coal company doesn't seem to have any rights left, or the Irvine Company does. They are transferring them around the center. Why is this not an applicable procedure instead of going for an increase in this particular block?
I do believe that Rosalyn will tell us that the entire center is built out, every square foot.
That is correct. That was my intended answer to your question, sir, yes.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Good. Selich, you want to weigh in on this, too?
Well, the only thing that I would say is that up in the airport area, we've done, when I was on the planning commission, quite a few of these small general plan amendments for square footage, 2,000 square feet or less, and it's not uncommon to be done.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Before we open up the public hearing? Okay, any public comment on this?
I would like to make one.
Just wait, I mean, any, Mr. McDonald, you want to speak on this? You don't need to. You can.
We prefer.
No, I'm not, he's...
I just want to say hi. I'm Bruce McDonald, the applicant, Master Development. And thanks, Mayor Heffernan and city council members for being here tonight, and I request your approval. And I want to thank Rosalyn for doing a fine job in evaluating and the commission for suggesting and recommending the approval of this small project tonight. We look forward to making our home in the building and appreciate your time. I'm here for any questions, if you'd like to answer, ask them.
Any question for the applicant?
I have one that may be related to him. Will this be used for medical?
No, I'm occupying it for office use, general-purpose office.
And is there a restriction on its use in medical, since we gave the Irvine Company strict authority to have medical in a block and, and that was supposed to be exclusive, in my understanding?
You know, I don't know anything, sir, about the Irvine Company. This is not property that's even remotely related to the Irvine Company, but I don't believe the property is zoned for medical use. If it, if it was, I'm assuming it would be by conditional use permit. It's all office surrounding us and no medical uses. This is up by the airport area, not, not down here in Fashion Island.
I see. This is not a Fashion Island.
No.
Okay, I misunderstood. I didn't look close enough at Von Karman.
Councilman Dagle? No question? Okay, any, any question from, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any public comment on this? All right, I'm gonna close the, that portion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item as recommended by staff.
Second?
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Always increasing the size of your area.
City clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, this is time for public comment. This is not, if it, if it pertains to an agenda item, you speak when the agenda item comes up, but it's open season on just about anything else, so long as you stay on some, something relevant to city business. Mr. Hildreth?
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. This is for the city council. And this is for Selich, because he doesn't have other documents. And then this is for city employees. The documents presented were, were presented on the 10th of May and the 24th of May of this year. In essence, I'm asking, just, just cut to the chase, to the bottom of the page, it says, answer this question, exactly how am I lawfully and slavefully to access this location? In the past, there was a, a platform and steps. The documents in the pamphlet here that, that has been presented to the city council show that this is a design structure for accessing the Grand Canal. The city has removed that structure and then they put in a ladder, which they claim that was for public access. And the, the question is exactly how to get down there now? It's too far to jump, as far as I understand, and there's a law against that. So, the question is exactly how I'm gonna get down there? Because if the city was presented the documents correctly on the 26th of July, 1999, hey, this is an anniversary. This is six years I've been doing this. Wow. If the city council was presented the correct documents right then and there, the, the city council would have come to realize that the city was obligated. It's already been on the works as an RP 801, which is designed for the Grand Canal. The documents show from West Armond and as well as Tony Mailen himself, that it is associated with the Grand Canal, in the Grand Canal, at the southwest end of the Grand Canal. And has had the number RP 801-00011 for a very long period of time, in fact, since 1976. In July, the 26th of 1999, did not come up to ask for a new permit. I asked for the city to allow for the permit and not to have that permit changed, but to actually allow for and agree to what was already agreed to back in 1976. Thank you.
Mr. Hildreth? Okay, this is time for public comment on non-agenda items. If you don't speak now, you're not gonna... If you don't speak now, you're not going to speak tonight, so please come up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight, Said Naseh, thirty-seven Lamonts.
No, 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 let's just identify yourself, that's fine. For the record, just tell us who you are.
Said Naseh, thirty-seven Lamonts.
And that's in Newport Coast.
That's right.
Good, thank you.
Go ahead. I'm here tonight to oppose spending our money on the community center. And I say our money, it's my understanding that if the community center does not get built, the money, the seven million dollars or so, will be credited back to the Newport Coast residents as part of the annexation agreement. And I have to admit that I really don't know much about this whole thing. My spouse just gave me a flyer that she received, and she said, you're going to the city council, so here I am. So I have some questions from council and staff. If you would educate me, I would appreciate it. So that's my first question. If the money is not spent, does it go back as a credit to Newport Coast residents? Prior to the meeting, the city clerk informed me that the city council held a study session and decided to go ahead with the project. This study session-
Now, let me stop you there. The study session, what we heard were from both the proponents and opponents of the project, at a study session, the city council takes no action. We polled the city council members after a study session, and they, on a majority, agreed not to take any further action. In other words, so what's the action before us to proceed with the community center is not going to be changed. We took no specific approval action. We just decided, we acted not to bring this back for a specific agenda's action by the city council.
What kind of approval process is the city going through to approve this project, including CCO compliance?
That has already taken place.
Were there public hearing notices sent out to the entire Newport Coast community?
Mr. Mayor- I think it's a matter of protocol.
Point of order, I think, let me say, he can voice his objection, and he's done that, but to stand here and ask for an education is not fair to the citizens, nor to the council.
I'm well-educated. I just want to know what the process is. The first question is, if the city doesn't build the community center, would the money go back to the Newport Coast residents? Yes or no?
Yes.
And as a member of Newport Coast resident, I can tell you, I was not notified of the council action and your, whatever approval process you went through. Now, I find that very disturbing and illegal.
Okay.
And what kind of CCO process you guys went through? Did you do a traffic study?
Well, we're not, this is not a give and take here. If you have specific questions, we're not going to do this in public session, you can-
Well, the public needs to know what kind of action the council took.
But you can do it through the staff, either the city, go ahead, city attorney, you want to respond to that?
They can look at the public records and the hearings on the clerk's website. There's all the actions and the testimony and the minutes from actions that have been prior taken. And then probably Dave Kiff of the city manager's office has information about this project, as does the public works department.
What kind of notice requirements did you guys, do you usually go through?
We'll give you that information. You can look through the city's codes and requirements and talk with staff, but this isn't the appropriate time to be answering those questions.
Does the city code allow you to spend my money without letting me know?
We're not going to go with this banter. I mean, if you start with the pre-annexation agreement first, that's the source of what the rules of the game are. And then you can, and Mr. Kiff or city attorney's office will provide that. That's where this all starts from. And from there, all the pieces fall into place, whether they're right or wrong, that's not what this council has agreed to change, and we're going to proceed on that basis. So this is not the place to ask us specific questions about it. You can deal with staff.
When can I meet with the city manager and the city attorney, then?
Just call him.
You can call and make an appointment. I'll give you my business card.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm John McMorro, and I live in Newport Coast as well. The last meeting that I attended on this was at, it was actually the Newport Coast Elementary School. I think Mr. Nichols was there, and there was a, probably about a hundred and fifty people there, and they were informed about this community center. The majority of those people were actually against that community center, and I believe what they said was that we were going to take a vote on this community center. The next action I hear, I see these sticks erected in the park, and my wife, as well, gave me this notice, and for me to come down here, and I asked a couple of questions, and I see that this whole process is moving forward. I was told that it was from representatives, unelected representatives from Newport Coast that represented the individual community associations, some of which are no longer residents of Newport Coast. And I think it's a very unfair process. The majority of people that live in Newport Coast do not want this community center, nor do they need it. I think the money could be better spent for someplace else in Newport Beach or Newport Coast.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mark Eckenweiler, and I'm also a resident of Newport Coast. And I also wanted to express my objection to the community center that's being proposed. Our understanding was that there would be a vote on it, and most of the residents in my neighborhood have all gotten together and have voiced their objection, and I am here tonight to represent them and the fact that they don't want to see the community center built as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David List, and my wife and son and I are a member, a resident of Newport Coast, St. Michelle, since 1998. And I'm here on behalf of myself, my family, and the majority of residents that I've personally polled in Newport Ridge, in Newport Coast, St. Michelle, that oppose the community center that's being built as planned in Newport Coast. And we're also here to request that this gets put to vote by the community, and that's what seems the majority of the citizens that I speak with and represent in my family, to put this up to vote. So I'm very disheartened to hear that this is not being put up to vote, so the community can voice their opinion with what they want, which is best. And I request that some consideration be made to put this to vote, as opposed to just acting with respect to what the community council had decided.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilman, councilwoman, my name is Don Phelps. I live in Newport Coast, Two Calais. I've addressed this group before, and I have to admit I'm getting nervouser and nervouser about what I'm seeing happen on this particular property. And now I hear that the building is going to be even higher than first suspected. And like the other people there, everyone that I talked to practically without fail is opposed to this. I believe that the city council was sold a bill of goods by the Newport Coast Annexation Committee members of the community center. I think their views were slandered, and I don't think that they were honest. They were even giddy. I mean, they, it was irritating to hear some of the comments from this platform when they presented their views to the city council. I happened to be watching it on television, and I can tell you that you just walk up and down through Newport Coast where Amarka, Liz, and other people, the people don't feel the way that they were, that you were, that this was presented to you. They just don't feel that way. They don't want this, they don't want the meetings. There's no burning desire there, there's nothing, no need. I was on the Newport Coast Committee of 2000, and I went to all of those meetings, and when they started talking about the community center, they said that this could possibly be a library, perhaps a senior center, maybe it can be a computer center, we might hold meetings. There was really no specific purpose given as to why this needed to be done. And I'm going to tell you right now, there still isn't. For ten years, the various homeowners associations have been meeting in homes, near swimming pools, in other community centers, say like at the apartments, at no cost to the city. I think that's something that the people here should consider. It's a pretty cheap way to do it. I'd hate to see a seven million or seven million plus go for this particular purpose. It's just not necessary. It's not a good way to spend money. The other thing that is very disconcerting to me is the fact that when people bought in Newport Ridge and signed their name, they got a house and they got a park, all on the same, with the same signature. Now the park's going to go away, or part of it, for something that was never negotiated for the people who bought it, and I think this is rather unfair.
Mr. Phelps, your time is up.
Thank you.
Your comments are noted. Any other public comment? Please come up, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, I'm Nicholas Hamilton of 215 62nd Street. I'm here today to, not to talk about, well, let me start by saying I was the appellant in an appeal of a planning director's decision on planning director's use permit, 2005 005. That appeal was upheld by the-
Wait, hold on, hold on. Is this on the agenda, city attorney or city clerk?
I believe that's one of the planning commission agenda items.
So, city attorney, can make, comment be taken on this particular item?
I would ask that he save it for the planning-
It's a very general comment.
Well, no, it doesn't matter. It's off track because we have as a planning commission agenda, and we will go through what was discussed at those planning commission meetings, and you can, then we'll have public comment on those.
Very good, I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's fine. This is new to me, every meeting, so. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to close general public comment, then. City clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
Okay, we're going to take these in order, they're listed. Mr. Selich, you're first.
There hasn't been any meeting of the general plan update committee, but I have had a couple of meetings with staff regarding the schedule and trying to tighten the schedule up a bit and also make sure that we stay on track on that schedule. And I haven't seen the final version of that, but I understand that we probably tighten it up by around thirty days, I think.
And what's, and the end game is to get this on the ballot in November 2006.
November 2006, correct.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, Mr. Ridgeway, on the local coastal plan?
Thank you. Actually, we met, part of the committee met, the council members met with staff to review the attempt by the coastal commission to delay us further in our hearing. And anyhow, we elected to write a letter, and I think, Robin, that letter was sent? Okay, there was a letter under my signature from the city that basically said, we have a right to be heard at the September hearing, and we actually have a right to a vote by the October hearing. They were trying to actually delay us beyond that. We actually give up our rights, we being the city. So this is on the land use element, not the implementation program. So I do believe that at least we will have a hearing in September. Unfortunately, it's in Eureka. That is obviously not close, but we're having, because we have to protect our legal rights, we are demanding that we be heard at that meeting.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, can you give the report for Newport Coast Advisory Committee? Thank you.
We've heard a little bit tonight already, the Newport Coast Advisory Committee has met. There was negotiations with the city with regard to the size of the park, the size of the park site, to provide enough parking for the facility that is being proposed there. Those negotiations were completed, and essentially the ball diamond up there was reduced slightly in size, so more parking places would be onsite available to the community center. The community center will be run by the city, as it is now constituted, and we're in design phase of the buildings, and they're now trying to get their final cost estimates in. So people should be aware of this. We've heard some of the community report back when they saw that the building will be possibly in a view plane or a backward view plane from Tesoro. That has been known for some time, but it was not as graphic as when the story polls. This material has been on a website of the city. The committee has met religiously once a month for several years, and so I'm pleased that people are becoming aware of it, but I think they need to find out what are the positives and the negatives of this, and get involved a little bit in what the, how it'll be run and so forth. This is a Newport Beach community center, then priorities will be given to the residents, and Newport Crest will be giving some of the parkland that it has, so that this can be completed. It will be a Newport Beach center. I believe that it's good for the community, but I, that's sort of up to you to decide. Our meetings are quite well attended as far as the amount of work that's been done and the information given, and please come, they're also on the website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Webb?
The first report is the Mariners Joint Use Library Ad Hoc Steering Committee. Our committee has not met, this is more or less a progress report on the construction of the library. I had the opportunity to actually have a walkthrough, and all of the spaces are now visible. You can feel how much room you're going to have. You can see the teen room, you can see the multipurpose room, you can see the divisions that, between the main part of the library and the children's library, and it's really beginning to take shape, and it's, I think, going to be a beautiful building and a very functional building. They still are on schedule and plan to have it completed probably around the end of March or sometime in April. The tennis courts have been finished and surfaced, and within the next two weeks should be open for play, depending on how the parks department wishes to schedule those. Item two, the Newport Beach City Centennial Committee, we are moving forward with a lot of activities. Councilmember Rosansky has reported on our latest fundraising event. One of the things that we are doing to, if you'd like to have some note cards that you can send around, the, again, the recreation senior city, recreation and senior department has put together these note cards, which have a picture of a Rose Bowl float on it, and they're selling them for ten dollars a packet, there's ten in a packet, that you can come down and pick up. If you wish to advertise our centennial, we have a logo that is also available. These peel off. I know, you need to look at these in the mirror. Just a second.
Here, I got it. Go ahead.
John's got it over there.
Keep talking.
He's peeled us off already, and this is something that, if you'd like to let other people know about our centennial, that's available. We will continue to, as a matter of fact, on August 1st, tickets go on sale for Let's Do Launch, which is our event on October 2nd, and it will have a number of events for the family all day long. the family all day long, and will close with the Beach Boy concert, uh, beginning at about 3:30 and going until 5:00. Last report, the Citizens Ad Hoc Committee for the Marina Park Planning. Uh, we met and have received really all the alternatives that, that we expect. Everybody has been given an opportunity to, to put the alternatives forth. Uh, at the last meeting, we set up a subcommittee to, uh, look at one of the functions that our committee was delegated to do, and that is to try to put together a set of goals and objectives for us to look at in evaluating the various different proposals that have been put forth and making, uh, a suggestion to the city council for what they might do in considering the various different alternatives. Also, uh, we will be looking, the, uh, the subcommittee will be looking at, uh, some of the, uh, the needs of the community related to parks, marine uses, and, uh, other uses that might be constructed at the Marina Park, and that would be used in helping to evaluate, uh, the various different proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway, you want to, you want to speak on the other Marina Park Committee?
Um, yeah, we will, the, uh, subcommittee, uh, Councilmembers, Rosansky and Mayor Protem Webb and myself and the city attorney will be meeting with the State Lands Commission, uh, representatives, he, August 2nd, okay, here at City Hall. It is not a Brown Act, or a, subject to, uh, it's not open to the public, but we will be meeting on the, uh, on the issue of the, the boundaries for, uh, any future development at Marina Park.
Okay, I'll report, though I'm, though Mr. Ridgeway is the chairman, um, of the City Hall Ad Hoc Building Committee, and, Mr. Blue, you can stop me if I'm letting something out of the bag. As I understand the schedule, so that the council and you, the public, uh, know about it, this has to do with the pending new city hall that we haven't approved, but it's being designed, and we're working on the underwriting and how we're going to pay for it. It will be the subject of an agendized, no, not study session, but agendized item at our August meetings on the, uh, 9th and 23rd, where we will be dealing with the building details, what is generally what it's going to look like, what's going to happen inside of it, what the layout's going to be, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a good time for, for all of us to get more informed, and for you to weigh in and to tell us whether we're on the right track or not. And secondly, on September 13th, uh, again, agendized item, we'll be dealing with the financing aspect, how we're going to, what, you know, how we plan to pay for this, where certificates of participation, how those work, what the projected potential rates would be, et cetera. Our idea is to inform the public and also, uh, inform, better inform the rest of the council as to those details, and so that we get, we get adequate input, as we're targeting to, uh, approve both building and financing, uh, on October 11th at that city council meeting. So, we want to bring this out to the public, uh, in the, in those three forms, at least, at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just dovetail in on your comments. We're, we're just looking for comments from the city council and also from the community regarding the sizing of the building and, and also how it looks. So, that would not be the final determination that council would be making, nor with the presentation from the financing team in the September meeting. We're just going through the whole process, saying where we are now, what has been accomplished thus far, and what would be accomplished when we come back in October, and, uh, are ready to present the whole package to the city council, and then you would be making your final determination.
Yes, but we wanted to have three agendized, not study session, but agendized, so it'll be a seven o'clock full-on meeting to deal with the building details and also the financing details. Thank you. City clerk?
Item number 16 is the planning commission agenda for July 7th.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. On July the 7th, which was a few weeks ago, the commission did, uh, have a rather lengthy, uh, planning commission meeting. The first item on their agenda, however, was a recommendation on the general plan amendment project that you already took action on tonight. Uh, I'm sure that it's simple just to say that the commission did recommend in favor of the action that you chose to take. Um, the next item is a new commercial project proposal at the corner of Orchid and East Coast Highway in Corona Del Mar. It's a, uh, commercial project, including both retail and office spaces. It did require approval of a use permit, uh, providing for the waiver of four of the required off-street parking spaces for the development. Um, this particular consideration-
Maybe you can explain what that meant. A closure of driveways in exchange for, oh, you are.
I'm getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the, uh, it was an interesting discussion because the staff, uh, had recommended denial of the parking waiver, because, uh, we have not typically used on-street parking spaces as the kind of municipal parking facility, uh, to justify the approval of a waiver. Our concern was, and still is, that, uh, people will start simply to point to parking in the street adjoining or nearby their, their property as a reason for not providing all of their required parking onsite. The planning commission, however, really felt that this project was remarkably different, uh, than other typical kinds of considerations of this nature. They believed that since, due to the closure of two fairly large driveways on Coast Highway, which served the prior service station use of the property, um, since those were going to be closed, that there would be new, four new on-street parking spaces available to the whole commercial district created as a result of the project. They felt that this made this project unique and different, and therefore, they overruled the staff and approved the waiver, uh, so long as those four on-street parking spaces are in fact, uh, created. They did include a condition of approval that should the applicant not be able to achieve the full complement of four new on-street parking spaces, for whatever reason, that the project would then have to be reduced commensurate with the, with the number of spaces that could not be achieved.
Okay. Patty, just for everyone's reference, that's the old Shell's, uh, gas station site, Orchid PCH, just adjacent to the post office. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to add, but pursuant to our council policy, I requested that the, um, an, an extension to the date upon which we can request a review of the planning commission approval, so that, and I will be talking about that tonight.
Yes. Councilmember Rosansky, in a timely fashion, did provide me, and I provided to the city clerk the appropriate, uh, request to extend the appeal period to tonight.
No, just, so, as I understand our rules now, the majority of the council has to agree if something's, if, for a city council member to appeal a planning commission item. So, is that what's being extended to tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Is that, is that right, city attorney? We can do that? Fine, go ahead.
I have a question. Is there a concern by staff that this would set some sort of precedent, that all of a sudden, new street parking could be applied to individual properties?
That, that is our principal concern, is that other applicants will say, "I've got on-street parking too. Why can't I not provide all of my parking onsite?"
Okay.
The next item was a use permit, um, actually, uh, an amendment to an existing use permit for a new restaurant, uh, at Ham, called Hamburger Mary's Bar and Grill Restaurant on Dolphin Striker Way. Uh, this is the property that used to be occupied by Trophies Sports Bar on MacArthur Boulevard. And, uh, the principal change being requested was to allow live entertainment and dancing in association with the use, as well as to make a small addition to floor area for an exterior smoking porch that was not, was to be used only for that purpose and not to be used for the, uh, service of, uh, food or beverage. Um, given the location in the airport area, the planning commission, uh, felt that, uh, this pro, this project would not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and did approve it. The last item, and certainly not the least item on the agenda, was the third public hearing held by the planning commission on the comprehensive sign code update and design guidelines manual. Um, you may or may not know, but in association with the ongoing consideration of this project, uh, staff and the steering committee that we formed to help guide our preparation of the sign code update did hold numerous, uh, public outreach meetings, and even, uh, for a couple of meetings, sent out over 10,000 notices to each and every, uh, commercial business and property owner in town to inform them of what we were doing and to, uh, solicit any, uh, input or concerns that they might have related to changes to our sign code. Um, I, we must have done a really good job, because at, at the last meeting, in fact, the last two, uh, public meetings, there were no persons coming to testify or make comment, and during our first hearing, we only had, uh, two people testify as to the new sign code. So, it appears that the business community, at least hopefully, will stay fairly, uh, comfortable with what we've been doing. Um, in order to bring this to council, because it is a code amendment, we are planning on starting with a study session, one of the two meetings in August, just to inform you, uh, give you a little bit more background on, on the project before we would then schedule it for public hearings, um, before your body.
Okay, just to be clear on this, this is the commercial sign code, not dealing with our street signs, directional signs. It's commercial signs.
It's commercial signs, and there are some provisions regarding signs on residential property.
Right, but it has to do with not city signs.
Correct.
It has to do with private, private signs.
Private signs.
Yes, thank you.
And that's the meeting of the 7th.
Yeah, is this the appropriate time to request a review or an appeal?
And, and we've covered all the, we've covered both planning commission meetings at this point, so all the staff report, just one?
I just did one.
All right, good. Then let's deal, deal them one at a time, then. Go ahead, Mr. Rosansky.
Okay, as, as I stated earlier, and as, um, Ms. Temple pointed out, the, uh, planning commission has approved this, um, retail development of 3,250 square feet, and gave the applicant a waiver of four parking spaces by, um, construing our code to define a municipal parking facility as on-street parking, which I think is a precedent that we certainly haven't set here at the city council, and I think we, um, would want to review that precedent and see if that's some, if that's a road we want to go down. Uh, we're looking at parking in many contexts around the city. At our last council meeting, we looked at, um, changing our codes with regard to condominium conversions, because we felt that non-conforming structures that don't meet parking requirements, um, it was just too easy to convert to condominiums, and we would never see any progress in having, um, that situation corrected. Uh, we look at other projects around town, uh, where parking is critical. I hear from residents, you know, the top two things are traffic and parking, traffic and parking. So, um, I, I, I don't know that it's a precedent that we would want to set, and I certainly think it would be the subject of, uh, discussion at a council meeting.
So, are you, uh, we're, are you seeking three other councilmen to support an appeal?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Webb?
I'll support that, uh, request.
That's two.
I'll support it.
There's three. Mr. Nichols?
I do not support it. These are new parking spots that where a curb cut was, and they actually are available to all the public. And so, it's, even in our city lots, you have to have a, a sticker in order to use them. So, you, basically, I think this is more available parking than we otherwise would get from any other source. So, I, I think, and I believe this applicant has gone through the mill already.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to question then. I, I don't feel that they are new parking places, because the city can go in there today and close those drive approaches and make those available to the public without, uh, having permission of the adjoining property owner, and those are public spaces that are, are there and available to the public. Uh, we have not closed it or required the person that is no longer using those driveways to close them.
All right, well, let's, let's make, let's see if we, because we're going to, we may hear this all again. Mr. Selich?
Um, I don't support the call-up. I think the planning commission made a logical decision on it. And I do believe that they did put some limitations on the fact that it would have to be new parking spaces that are created, so I don't think that it puts the rest of the parking supply at risk to being claimed as off-street parking by other businesses.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, um, I'll defer to you, mister.
No, I can, I get to speak last. That's the, that's one of the advantages. It's sort of like a drainer, kind of at the low spot.
Um, I, I voice, uh, planning's, uh, concern, but, uh, I, I, without reason, I just will not support calling it up.
Okay, I will. So, that makes four. We'll call it up. I think it's a policy decision, and I think, I think the planning commission is looking for direction, and even if the ultimate conclusion is we'll leave things alone, I think it's, if there's this much turmoil about it, let's call it up. So, do you have enough to, is this, city attorney, is that enough? Or do you need a formal motion? Do we have public testimony? What do we need to do?
Um, while you're doing that, you might want to, um, I did this quite informally, did need to allow for public comment.
No, no, just tell me, is it, does, do we need a motion? And a second. Okay, we've had, do we have a motion?
Okay.
Do we have a second? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we've teed up the issue. Okay, now-
Open for public comment.
Public comment. Mr. Hillerth?
One real quick. I don't see, um, any comments being made about, um, timed parking or metered parking, for that matter. I know that, um, in a res, in, uh, commercial zones on, well, for example, Babo Island, that's, uh, it's timed. And on the peninsula, there's areas that are metered, so, uh, I would, I don't know if anybody would be up on arms in that, uh, but I don't know if this is new parking that hasn't been addressed before. Uh, maybe that's another way. That's another revenue for the city.
Okay, anybody else for?
My name is Barry Fisher. I'm one of the developers of this project, and we've been working with the city, with the staff, with the planning commission for at least a year. And, uh, we've presented several different methods of developing this property. And the method that we're using in hoping to get the waiver, the, the idea of doing this, the recommendation came from, uh, the planning commission at a planning commission meeting. And, uh, we've gone through it with, uh, traffic, et cetera, and everything seems to work. Uh, parking is parking. Uh, I think the, the residents of the city, uh, are getting more use out of these spaces than if they were in the, in the private lot, where they couldn't use them. Uh, we came down this, uh, highway this afternoon at, oh, late this afternoon, and, uh, all of the existing street, street parking was empty. This was about, uh, 4:30 or 5 o'clock. No one was using any existing street parking there. So, I don't think we're putting a burden on anybody, and, and it's a good project, and it's only viable, it's a small project, and it's only viable with approximately 3,250 square feet that we proposed. Uh, we did the best we could. Uh, I hope this doesn't take too long, this next call-up or whatever happens now, but we're really very, very disappointed that, that you can't see your way clear to approve this project as we presented it. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Fisher.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fisher, on a previous occasion, you had the, uh, square footage upstairs and tuck-under parking. Uh, was that adequately parked when you had the footage of-
Yes.
And that was denied?
It was denied by the planning commission.
And what was the reason?
They didn't like the project. They, they, they wanted it street level.
I believe that it exceeded the bulk ratio of the requirements. Maybe Patty can address that.
This, this, excuse me, if I can say, this is kind of turning into conversation about the project, which is not the subject of the action tonight. This is just the-
Yeah, but I, I think the gentleman needs direction for the next meeting, because, uh- Yeah, but I, I think the gentleman needs direction for the next meeting because based upon the policy decision that we're forced to, I, I think it'd be, it would be appropriate that we see what was previously denied on this project, on this property.
That could be provided to the council as part of a snap report.
That's fine, but I, I think we need to see that because this gentleman is trying to get a yield on this property, and he's being denied the yield in one iteration, and now he's being denied in another iteration. So I think we need to see the entire package, and that's why I'm giving, I'm trying to get direction here. I, he doesn't, he's losing time. And at this point in time, I think this is an appropriate conversation so we can have an appropriate package before him and hopefully not deny him both time and square footage.
And Mr. Mayor, speaking of time, we have some noticing requirements based upon this call-up, and we probably would not be able to bring it back until the first meeting next month.
Okay, all right, that sets the stage. You still have the floor. We have, we didn't mean to cut you off.
Excuse me, two, two meetings from now.
Okay.
We're perplexed in that staff says yes, Planning Commission says no, the Planning Commission says yes, the staff says no. Okay, you will give us some direction, or somebody will give us some direction.
Right, you've reached the end of the line. We are the final say.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what to do.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public testimony on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I do have a question for our veteran Planning Commissioner, Mr. Selich, and that is, how many times, you were 10 years on the Planning Commission, did this situation arise? If you can remember.
Waving parking spaces?
Well, no, I mean, yes, waving parking spaces or taking parking from the street and applying it as onsite.
Well, we've never taken on-street parking and applied it onsite, and as far as waving parking spaces, maybe seven or eight times.
So is this the first time you've taken on, off-site street parking and applied it as if it was onsite?
Yes, absolutely.
It's never been requested before?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. All right, listen, this is, this-
It's been requested, yeah.
It has, I didn't recall.
Okay.
I can remember.
Any other, any other comment here? Because I am, since I was sort of the pivotal vote, I am persuaded by the applicant, because that's what I also do in my part-time job now. And so I, I would ask you, unless there's other comment by the City Council that we-
And I have another comment.
Okay, go ahead.
The applicant came up and said, yes, you know, I've come before the Planning Commission with one project I was denied, and I've come with another project that was, the staff did not approve or did not support, and he did receive approval, but the issue is, is he asking for too much for the site? And do we want to set this precedent of giving on-street parking spaces for commercial development? I mean, as a city, he says the project is not economically viable. Well, what does that mean? That if he builds 2,250 square feet, which he could park on his site, or maybe 2,500 square feet and make his building a little smaller and get another parking space, that he's not going to make money there or as much money? I mean, I don't know what economically viable means, and we are not the last stop for making properties economically viable. I know that retail space, or at least what I hear, sells for about $500 a square foot in Corona Del Mar. Well, an extra thousand square feet is basically what we're allowing the applicant to have if we give him credit for these four spaces. Well, that's $500,000 in value. Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to have $500,000 in my pocket, too, but that doesn't mean that, why don't we just give him, you know, 4,000 square feet? And then it's a really viable project. So, I mean, the question is, where do we draw the line? I mean, we, it seems we have rules, we have parking requirements, but, you know, we're not the deep pocket here, we're not the savior of commercial development. Maybe he overpaid for the land, thinking that I'm going to build, you know, whatever I want to build there. Well, people have to understand that when you buy property, there are certain rules as to developing the property. And, you know, we can't just change the rules because someone may have overpaid or because they've submitted plans more than once. I mean, we have many applicants who submit plans that are not approved initially and have to come back time and time again. That's just part of the process, unfortunately. So, you know, because the applicant has asked for more than what we would normally require is not our problem, that's his problem. And I believe, as I said earlier, that the Planning Commission has set a precedent by declaring on-street parking a municipal parking facility. I think that's a very strained definition. Therefore, the whole city now is a municipal parking facility because we have on-street parking. You know, what about condominiums? Are we going to allow two, two-car duplexes, or, well, actually, we haven't changed it yet, but if we do change it, that you have to have two parking spaces? Does that mean if you have a parking space in front of your house that you're going to get credit for that? Or if you had, you know, two garages and you're going to close up one driveway in a residential neighborhood, you're going to get credit for that because you have municipal parking? It, to me, it just doesn't make sense in a town where we are starved for parking. And so, you know, maybe it highlights another question, and I believe staff is analyzing this, as to whether we need some type of in-lu parking fees so that if we do give this applicant extra square footage, that we do have an offsetting fee that's going to allow us to create parking in an area like Corona Del Mar, which is starved for parking. So I don't agree that, that, you know, just because the applicant comes here and says, you know, I've been having a little hard time of it, that we're just going to have to roll over and say, well, we'll just throw our code out the window to give him what he wants or what he says he needs. So I still object, and I would think that it would be wise for us to have a full discussion with a full staff report so that we can look at this and see the ramifications of our action down the road. Thank you.
Okay, who wants to speak? Mr. Nichols?
If this were a, a new property and, and basically that we're nothing developed along Coast Highway, I think you would be absolutely right. The problem is, is that we have developments all along Coast Highway, and I can't remember the last one that supplied all the parking. In fact, I can't remember one that supplied all the parking in the last five years. So this is an exception. This man is supplying all the parking onsite or adjacent to by closing driveways that he has rights to use. But, I mean, it, it's a continuing right to use if he had that as a filling station. My, my point is, is that this gentleman has met the rules, and he met the rules before. And, and we decided that we really would like to have all the stores on the ground floor. I mean, we didn't want the, the stores up in the air. And I think there's merit to that, but I, but I would point out that the code says one thing and then the merit says another. I think the gentleman has done more than his share to, to meet their codes, to meet the, the philosophy of the code, to meet all the good things that we engender, and I certainly would think that he deserves the, the right to build this project. If we would look at the other, particularly the restaurants and so forth that we have put in throughout Corona Del Mar on the basis that if it's commercial property, it can be used for anything commercial, including restaurants, and they don't have any place for garbage, and they don't have any trash pickup, and they don't have any parking, and basically, they're, well, we just grandfather them. And then you turn around on this guy, and he's doing all these things, jumping through all these hoops, and I don't know what else he has to do. I can't understand it.
Hold on, hold on, wait, wait, let's hold on. This is, that, that project's in Mr. Nichols' district, and that's an affirmative vote that it go ahead without an appeal. Go ahead, Mr. Webb.
I'd like to call for a vote. I think we're discussing the merits of the project, and all we wanted to do tonight was determine whether or not we would call the item up. And so I think that it would be appropriate for us to vote on it now.
All right, just, wait a minute. Councilman DeGel, you have a comment first?
Yes, I appreciate Mayor Potem Webb's comments, and I see no problem with looking at the full range of issues and the history of this project from its inception and what the original design was. One of the things that swayed me is that the staff is opposed to it. They've been looking at these issues for 20 years, and I'd like to hear, you know, their concerns about it. So I think redevelopment is one of the issues that we're going to be facing in the next 10, 20 years in our community, and parking and all this, and so I'd like to hear all the issues and the kind of chronology of this development, and maybe something can come out that, that might ultimately be better for the developer. But I'd like to hear the issues.
Okay, one, one last question from me to Patty. It was a 4-2 vote. Who are the, who are the two no's? Do you remember? Mr. Campbell, do you remember?
He wasn't there. I don't, I do not remember.
Okay, we don't know. Okay, any other comments here? Well, that's a, that's a hot seat over there, I know, so.
Then it looks like it was Commissioner Eaton, and depending on, this was after they switched seats, so then it would be Commissioner Hawkins.
Hawkins and Eaton. Okay. All right, are we?
We're not sure.
But we're not sure. This is not, we're not going to bank. Okay, any other comments for the, by the council?
What's the motion?
The motion would be to, to send this, to appeal, to call it up for appeal by the, by the City Council. Okay, let's vote.
With council members Selich, Heffernan, Ridgeway, and Nichols voting no, the motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I believe one of the audience did want to speak on a Planning Commission agenda item?
The next one.
Okay, I'm sorry, are we moving on to the next?
Yeah, we're going to take a hearing by hearing. Okay, Patty.
Okay, confusing myself now. Last Thursday, the Planning Commission also had a fairly interesting meeting. They had on calendar for the third time an appeal of a zoning administrator's approval of a condominium conversion, and the issue was a condition that required that the two-car parking garage be separated with a wall and two separate garage doors, one to serve each of the two residences. In order to accomplish this and, and also have parking spaces wide enough to meet code, it would require more modifications to the garage area than would be required if the separation was not required. And it was actually the applicant that appealed this decision because of concerns over the extra costs associated with making that division. The applicant asked for several continuances, and by the last meeting, I think the commission was extraordinarily frustrated with the fact that the applicant continued not even to show up for his hearings. And I think that they knew that they wanted to support the zoning administrator anyway. So they denied the appeal but did it without prejudice. So should the applicant wish to come back before them and petition for this change, he has the right to do so. The second item on the agenda was a traffic study approval pursuant to the traffic-facing ordinance for the third phase of already-approved development on the lower campus at Hoag Hospital. There really was no discussion on this item as the traffic-facing ordinance report showed no impacts which required mitigation, and that was approved quite easily. The next item was a condominium conversion for an existing eight-unit apartment complex up in the Domingo Drive area near East Bluff and the Our Lady Queen of Angels campus and Corona Del Mar High. There were two issues discussed. One was whether the site could be redesigned to provide the four required guest spaces, which were not present on the property, even though two enclosed spaces for each unit were being provided. And also, one of the existing residents questioned whether the necessary notice required by our code was actually done adequately. Because of the concern about the notice, the Planning Commission did continue the item to, to allow required notice to be given. The last item on the agenda is, was a request to make changes to an existing eating and drinking establishment to allow creation of a restaurant called Salud on property in the West Newport Beach Commercial District on Coast Highway at 32nd Street. The property involved is immediately behind the existing spaghetti bender restaurant, which some of you may patronize from time to time. The big issue surrounding this was the applicant wanted to change the closing hour from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and also wanted to add approximately 600 square feet on, to the second floor of the building, which is currently a one, one-story structure, to provide an office space for restaurant personnel, restaurant manager, and, and also perhaps some other users that might make, make use of that office space. This particular request would have required a use permit approval to allow utilization of the existing pool of entitlement within the West Newport area to allow an FAR of .62, which is above the .450 allowed by right under the zoning code. They also talked extensively about the parking present on the property, which after the site improvements would be seven for the entire building. The Planning Commission's greatest concern was the extra floor area and whether that was justified, and also whether it perhaps should have some parking associated with it. So they did overrule the zoning administrator on these items, although they did approve the changes to the restaurant operation itself. That concludes my report for the meeting of the 21st.
Any questions for Patty?
I didn't quite understand what they did, Patty. Did they approve the square footage or not?
No, not the extra square footage.
Not the extras, so they just, they allowed it to move forward without that?
Correct.
And what did they do with the closing hour?
They want, they imposed 10, 10:00 PM as a closing hour.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment?
Mr. Mayor, council members, please accept my apologies for my gaffe earlier.
There's no gaff here. That's all right, as long as you don't stick 'em in us, so.
I'm not here to discuss the merits of my appeal or reciprocal use agreements. I've set forth-
Let's have your name again.
I'm sorry, I'm Nicholas Hamilton. I'm at 215 62nd Street. My home is directly across the street from the building. I'm not here to discuss the merits of the appeal or the details of it. All I want to say is that, and I've made clear to the City Council in written correspondence that I hope the appeal is, that the Planning Commission's decision is not appealed by the applicant or City Council, and that we can have a nice restaurant in our neighborhood like we had a couple of years ago, providing goods and services to the community. I also wanted to say that I found several inconsistencies with the code in the proposed project, and those inconsistencies were not all addressed by the Planning Commission, though they did find sufficient inconsistency to grant my appeal. And I would ask that in the, what I think would be unfortunate event, that this prop, this revised or amended permit were appealed to City Council, that there be sufficient time before a hearing by the council for all of the facts to be explored and for all of the inconsistencies to be reconciled. And I think that's all I have right now. I thank you very much. I do have original signed copies of correspondence that had previously been delivered to the city clerk by email that I'd like to hand off, if that's okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Mike Hoskinson. I'm the owner of this spaghetti bender restaurant in question. I wanted to come and talk to you a bit about the project that was part-approved and part-not-approved the other night. The reason, well, number one, I want to say that I'm excited to make a local investment in Newport Shores. There has been very, very little investment, and none in the commercial strip since the Best Western was built five or six years ago. The project is probably going to cost me in total between $600,000 to $750,000 when it's all done. So it's going to- So it's going to be a beautiful building and a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. I guess the question I get a lot is, why is this office crucial to our business? Right now, currently, we have an office at site that is four by eight. It houses my manager of 20 years. Very little room for us to do our business there. Now that our business is expanding, we certainly, as you might guess, need more space. So this plan is built into that to support that need. The findings I believe were made from the statistical area footage, which is over 17,000 square feet currently in West Newport, of which we're taking 638 square feet to make that allowance. The office creates no demand in parking because all the people that will be using it are currently on-site. Staff has supported all their own approvals. They wrote a fairly lengthy support of everything that they approved there. So I don't know what inconsistencies my neighbor is speaking of, but I don't believe they found that there were any inconsistencies in their findings there. And a lot is made of what is special consideration for areas. And I would say that Newport Shores deserves its special consideration because it has been-- it's been left in the weeds, so to speak. There have been no-- there are very few businesses that people have put any time or money into, and I would say that I am that guy to come in and put that in there. But I do need the consideration of putting my office in, and it is a very, very necessary component of this project. And that would be my comments.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Ridgway?
Mike, you have the right to appeal. We're not going to make any comments to your request. So you heard your neighbor. He's opposed you. You heard the Planning Commission. It's your choice.
Well, I would certainly solicit any comment anyone had on what they view would be an alteration or somewhere that that could be approved, where the office could be approved. I would love everybody's help in that matter.
I don't think you're gonna hear that, Mike.
We're good. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll close that for this agenda item. City attorney, no further action. Just receive and file at this point. Great, thanks. City clerk?
Item number 18, establishing a protocol for the upcoming public hearing for the St. Andrews Presbyterian Church expansion project.
City manager, what's-- who's gonna give the staff report or give us some direction?
If you want a staff report, Jim Campbell, who wrote the staff report, will provide a summary.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and some members of the city council, the city council directed staff to prepare a protocol for the upcoming St. Andrews hearing, which will be held on August the 11th. We did so, and that's attached to your staff report as the single attachment. We feel that this particular protocol the staff developed will provide, you know, hopefully an orderly hearing and provide everyone an opportunity to speak at that hearing. So I can go through the various steps here if you like, but if there's any questions, I'm available for any questions.
I have a question, and that was I was provided a different script, which I provided the city council by Planning Commission Chairman Tucker, having to do with a hearing, but a bifurcated one, dealing with two steps rather than a single testimony-based hearing like you may have proposed here. One, dealing first with EIR, with a kind of a laying out of the rules, why we're dealing with that, what substantial evidence means, taking testimony on that, not making a decision, cutting off public testimony, then going to the second point, and that being dealing with the land use, you know, the zone change and all of that, as a separate component of public testimony, and then voting on the first item, which was certification of the EIR, second item, the land use decision, which is different than what the staff is proposing. Do you want to comment on that?
I did have a chance to review the protocol that you provided the council today. My only concern really there is with having two hearings, and the public would be getting up maybe twice to speak on the EIR and speak on the project. And my only concern is that a lot of times the public is confused over the difference between talking about the environmental issues and the project, and it might make for a longer hearing, so that's really-
Well, the reason that my advice from Chairman Tucker to do it in that way is because what we want to do is prepare a succinct, cohesive, public record of the hearing, dealing with the EIR, in case somebody wants to litigate that, that we have a very clean record and public testimony solely on that item. You know, with the protocol beforehand, what we're dealing with, testimony dealing from the public dealing with that, and then dealing with that segment of the record separately rather than combining public testimony on EIR, public testimony on land use, and kind of having a casserole of public testimony rather than a specific record of that.
Certainly, I think we do want to create a good record for the project, and I think that that actually can be accommodated within the staff proposal. It can be done in the fashion that you've suggested. I think it's really the council's prerogative as to how they want to handle it. But in the protocol I developed, I really didn't set forward kind of, you know, the scripting of each individual event. I did put in the protocol, an item there for the council to discuss SEQA and the environmental issues, you know, definitely trying to keep-- create a record such as you've suggested, and that was in item 7B. But I really was-- I think having the testimony in two separate occurrences, people might get up twice, it might make for a longer hearing, might be a little confusing, but I think it can be done either way, and I think it's really the council's call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you know what? I never received your protocol. We didn't get it.
This one? No, this one. There's a separate one that I provided. It looks like this.
Yeah, I never received it.
Was it left up here? City clerk?
I don't have it. I have John's draft.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
I don't have a staff report.
Oh, it's on the back page.
You know, I don't have it either, but I think it came in Friday's packet, is what it was.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be interested in hearing staff's kind of highlighting of the protocol they were suggesting.
I'm sorry, where's the staff report?
It looks like this.
I don't have that.
It's on the back-- it's on the back page of-- it came out on the Friday supplemental. I apologize for not being in the Wednesday report, but-
I'm gonna say it was not in my package.
Okay, I agree. Councilman Dagel? All right, you have the first-- you're on, you have the floor. Tell us how you-- how staff would propose to do it.
Certainly. In essence, the city clerk would announce the item by title, the way that all public hearings are done. In essence, the mayor, we would ask that she would explain to the audience kind of the general conduct of the hearing. I've indicated basically several admonitions for the public. We obviously want people to not call out and disrupt the proceedings. We're looking at doing speaker cards. We're looking at limiting testimony to two minutes per person so that we can get as many people through as possible. You know, we also want to make sure that we have available seating and not disrupt the flow. We also want to have a protocol where we have two reserved seats here in the front, where you would announce maybe two speakers, two, three speakers. They could come down quietly and sit and wait, and so we have kind of like an orderly progression, so we're not waiting for people to get up and come down. Anyway, and in addition, there's one item here that we've indicated that you can take testimony until all speakers have spoken, or you could limit the testimony to a certain time period. That's really the council's prerogative. Obviously, if the testimony is getting repetitious, the city council might want to kind of, you know, move people along to new information. Anyway, those would be the basic general conduct, admonitions at the beginning of the hearing, and then from that point, go into the applicant, who would then present the project, and suggesting 20 minutes. I did confer with the applicant on that timeline, and they feel that that would be a reasonable period of time that they could present the project and put what items into the record that they would like to as well. The next item would be the presentation by the organized, the joint homeowners associations, Cliff Haven and Newport Heights. Their representatives would then have 20 minutes to speak as well, so we have a same amount of time for both sides. At that point in time, then we go into public testimony, and again, this would be the public coming up, presenting, saying what it is they want to say, whether that be on environmental issues or the project as a whole, you know, that would be fine. I've indicated an item here for the applicant to provide a rebuttal or a response for five minutes. They're the ones who are asking for this consideration and felt it was appropriate for them to have that opportunity. And lastly, in essence, that would be for the council to deliberate and to discuss the merits of the application. Obviously, go over, you know, any missing information that they might need, discuss what the Planning Commission did and their recommendation and how we got here. And in essence, the portion where we would discuss the environmental impact report, and in essence, I think the script that you provided, Mr. Heffernan, it'd be perfect to kind of guide the council and the public through that discussion, and then get the SEQA part of it out of the way, and then go into the general discussion about the overall project, its merits or lack thereof, and then council would then act on the item that evening if they so chose. That's kind of the basic outline that I've prepared, and I think the items that you've indicated can be put in here, or we could take this as well if that's really-
Listen, this is the vice given by Planning Commission Chairman that's had a lot of SEQA experience, and was just trying to get a clean record, assuming that the end result is that the council certifies EIR. They don't, then it's-- the record is not meaningless because it's not the final version of it, and then deal with the land use decision separately. That was all. And that was his recommendation. I'm not-- I'm an apprentice at this, and he is more than experienced, not just in the city but elsewhere. Mr. Selig, you have any opinion on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just for the council's information, one of the reasons that the Planning Commission went to this kind of a procedure on projects that we felt that had a high profile or had the potential to be controversial was, as you stated, was in going through the SEQA process to establish a clear record that all of the issues that were raised during the review period are adequately addressed, and there's a clear, concise administrative record so that if it ever gets to litigation or whatever, that it's very clear that all the issues were addressed and that it would further ensure that the EIR is deemed adequate. And I know that at least on one occasion, that-- I don't think it was on an EIR, but it was on a separate issue that the city attorney's office, Dan Oll, came up to me and said that by the Planning Commission being very deliberate and clear on that particular case, that it was of great assistance to the city attorney's office in trying the case. So that's the reason the Planning Commission went to it. I mean, it could be done, is outlined here, or what's said under item number one could be contained under the scenario that the staff has, where they're talking about discussion of the EIR. But if it's done the way the staff recommends it, then probably what's in section one of what you handed out should be incorporated into section, what is it, seven of how the staff recommends doing it. The idea is at the end we have a clear record in that we go through and address each and every one of the issues that's been addressed.
Are there council input or questions for staff? Councilman Dagel?
I have a question for the city attorney. In terms of what staff has proposed, do you believe that it'll create a clean record for litigation in case that would occur?
Yes, I think both versions will. The hearing within, the hearing, the concept of narrowing the issues just to the environmental, and it would probably work a little bit more clean that way, but I think one of the things that can happen, as Jim Campbell stated, is that the community or the people that are talking might get a little confused and then get up and try and talk, and then you say, well, no, we're not talking about that right now, we're only talking about this. So the two ways to do it is to try and narrow the focus to just the environmental at some point in time in the hearing so that all comments that are made regarding environmental issues are separated out. The other way to handle it would have to be for the chair, for the mayor, and the context of each of the people that get up to speak to try and elicit what their comments are and whether they're directed towards the environmental document versus the just general land use issues of the project.
So it becomes more burdensome for the mayor to manage that kind of a hearing?
Well, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, from Mr. Tucker's input here, when you're dealing with EIR, dealing with the substantial evidence test, which is not based speculation or feeling, it's based upon hard facts, and that is what is key to somebody coming up and opposing the adequacy of the EIR, which is a different standard than they might for the land use decision, where they might just say, I just don't like all the cars going in front of my house, which would be just an objective viewpoint rather than something-- or subjective rather than objective. And I thought there was a different standard.
Right, no, and it's not necessarily that it's a-- it is a different standard, it's just a matter of how you want to elicit the information and make it clear in the record of whether their objection is to the project as a whole or a project from a land use planning point of view, and also what their position is with regards to the adequacy of the environmental document.
I could well see that we'd have people come up twice, but again, I think it would be-- you could hone in, I think, the testimony on the EIR, the environmental impact report, more cleanly that way, and still if they want to come up again, dealing with the project, because by, you know, you have to-- it has to be consent on both items, is that correct, before the project can move forward? And I'm dealing with a record issue rather than trying to stifle, in any case, any public testimony. That's not the target.
There's no specific requirement. A lot of people are under SEQA for a public hearing. It's more a matter of the environmental document being considered as part of whatever the project is, so it's just a matter of how the council wants to break it up.
Good, okay. Council can weigh in on this? Councilman Webb?
A question, considering the, after we get to testimony, and you've requested, or procedure requests, the speakers fill out cards, would we be asking them to indicate on the cards what they were in favor against the program to where we would try to give some balance to testimony, or would we just pick it at random?
Mr. Campbell, you want to address that?
Well, that was kind of a thought by staff in an earlier draft of the agenda, is to maybe have opposed or not, and then maybe kind of segregate the two to create the balance. We decided to move against doing that. I think Mr. Bronberg did that for the Temple project, and it seemed to work well, but I always wondered what happens when you run out of-- in favors and you have a lot more opposed, and then all of a sudden it becomes imbalanced toward the end of the hearing. So we figured we might just, you know, have it just our standard card.
Well, how did the Planning Commission do it?
There was no kind of balancing act there. I think they were just, people came up. We didn't even use speaker cards.
Okay, Mr. Webb, excuse me, Mr. Ridgway?
Yeah, thank you. Quite candidly, I support, probably even strongly, the suggestion by the staff. Integration of the issues is not difficult. We are called on all the time. I don't care about making a record, quite candidly. I do care about listening to people twice saying the same thing. So quite candidly, I can discern what the EIR comment is, and I can discern what the project comment is, and to be honest with you, 99% are going to be project-related, but when you try to segregate the two, they're going to be confused. So quite simply, let's make this as simple as possible. I like making it two minutes. I do like giving both the homeowners associations adequate time and the applicant five minutes. To me, listen, it all goes in, it gets pretty jumbled up there, but I don't care how the judge reads a record.
Okay, other-- Councilman Rosansky?
I guess just one comment as to the, I think, I don't remember if it was in this one or that one? I'm sorry?
This is stiff.
Yeah, no, I know which or which, I'm just saying. The response by the applicant, limited to five minutes. Are we also going to give five minutes to the neighborhood associations for response?
Well, usually in a court of law, you know, the last person to have the rebuttal is the applicant.
Well, the applicant's gonna present-
You know, it's a ping-pong battle. I mean, the applicant has to prove his or make his case for persuasive, and then I just don't see going back and forth and back and forth, no. That's not what I would recommend.
Okay, well, I guess I would. I guess I would, in fairness, I would give each side five minutes if they want to rebut what was said, especially if we're talking about after presentation by the public of their comments.
That's fine, as long as you leave the applicant the last five minutes.
Well, then switch the order, that's fine with me. I don't care, I just think they're each entitled to five minutes.
City clerk?
Policy A10 addresses how public hearings are actually supposed to be held.
Uh-oh. Have we stepped on ourselves here, or? Go ahead, city clerk.
Well, I haven't had much of a chance to read it, but the first item would be the presiding officer asks the city manager to summarize the nature of the hearing and the issues to be resolved. Number two, the presiding officer invites the person or entity that filed the application to make the presentation. You'll have a reasonable amount of time to present the evidence or testimony. The city council, city manager, or city attorney may ask questions of the applicant or any witness. Number three, in the event the matter is pending before the city council by virtue of an appeal, the presiding officer shall invite the appellant to make the presentation. Number four, upon conclusion of the presentations by the applicant and the appellant- Number four, upon conclusion of the presentations by the applicant and the appellant, if any, the presiding officer shall invite testimony from members of the audience. Prior to closing the hearing, the presiding officer shall give the applicant the opportunity to comment on the evidence, with the right to comment limited to no more than five minutes. The presiding officer shall have the discretion to require the applicant, the appellant, and their respective witnesses to present testimony under oath, and the presiding officer shall have the right to exclude testimony or evidence which is not relevant to any issue before the council. And that's basically what your policy states.
Good, thanks. Okay.
Sounds like the evidence goes to me.
Councilman Nichols, excuse me, go ahead.
I mean, you could still have a sequoia hearing and a hearing on the merits like you have.
No, that's fine. I don't think anybody has a set mind to do it one way or the other, and I think that they're, I just have a sense they're backing the staff. In other words, one single set of testimony from the public dealing on both issues. Yeah, Mr. Rosansky?
I'd also like to make, propose a time limit of four hours for public testimony. I don't, I hope that it does not go that long, because I think after four hours we'll exhaust at every possible idea, but in the off chance that it would, I would suggest that.
Should I bring my toothbrush?
Maybe, and a little coffee.
Mr. Bouda, did you have a suggested start time?
My suggested start time was six o'clock, 6:00 P.M.
All right, then, let's just play this out. Six o'clock we start, we describe what's before us, the action item, and when do you think that we would really get into testimony at that point? 6:30?
Oh, before that, I think the presentations would start by 6:10.
All right, good, okay. Any other put in here from city council before we open up for public testimony?
I think four hours is a little bit too long and would recommend testimony at, two hours was suggested at one time, but that might not be quite enough, but let's say three hours, that'd still allow two minutes per person, and if you allow 30 seconds per changeover, that allows 60 people to testify. So, I think three hours would be adequate for public testimony.
All right, another comment? Okay, we'll bring this back after we hear first from the public. Let's open up to the public, if you'd like to speak on this, we'd like to hear from you.
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. As a recipient of a two-minute time element in previous meetings, two minutes is not even long enough really to be cordial to the city council or to anybody else. You still have to state your name, and if you want to say, "Your honor, and mayor, and council member," and all that takes up too much time. We can keep it short like I do, last name only, but I think that two minutes is just way too short. Thank you.
Don Crote, Newport Beach. Mayor and council, I want to acknowledge and thank Councilman Rosansky for making this suggestion, because it was the only criticism the joint homeowners' associations have to Jim's writing or the staff rendition of this, and it is very important that as long as you've gone, and staff has gone to such trouble to provide equal time, that we provide an equal wrap-up opportunity, as Steve suggested. And I don't have a problem at all embracing what Todd has said, either we have the applicant go last if you want, but by all means, if you want to interject prior to Roman numeral seven, or, excuse me, Roman numeral six, provide a response by the joint homeowners' association, and we would thank you for that. Other than that, we've read what's been placed on the web, and we thank Jim for his suggestion, and we accept.
Good. Another question? Yes.
Mr. Crote, would you mind a two-hour limit on total public testimony like is shown in the staff report, or do you think that's too short?
In the two years of Planning Commission meetings, I personally asked people not to come and speak, so, but my cries to the public at the school district were not well heard, and it was packed. So, I would say, let your conscience be your guide, but if you want to strike a balance between the two and the four...
Ten minutes.
There is a three in between the two and four, and we would accept that, but I'm, we're just open, we're very respectful of the process, we're very open.
So, you drink?
One other alternative to actually setting in advance a time period is you could set a time period at the meeting, depending upon how many people say they want to speak. The other thing you could do is, at some point in time, I think as Jim suggested, start feeling like you're getting a lot of redundant testimony, even though I know you would ask for it for there not to be, and then at that point in time, maybe you could give an additional time period for any new information and then cut it off after that. So, you may not have to do it right up front, but you could at least give some advance notice that testimony will be cut off after a certain period of time if it's, becomes too redundant.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on that, I think one concern that I would have, if you have two hours or three hours, one side could say, "Okay, we want to flood the chambers, and we want everybody to submit a card so that most of that time would be taken up with either a pro or a negative side." So, I think that's just one thing to be cautious of.
However, and counter to that, Homer, I'm at San District SCAG, and we put an absolute limit, some of them, you know, very contentious, we'll put 40 minutes max, and it doesn't get loaded, you know, because it's just, so people have to move through.
Okay. Any other staff comment? Okay.
I'm Gary McKidric, and I'm the attorney for St. Andrews. I just wanted to make one comment as it relates to the record with sequoia. We would support, I actually have not seen Commissioner Tucker's suggestion, although having a clear public record is advantageous for all of us that have gone through this process, the city and the applicant, who've spent a lot of time on the EIR. This project has had a mix of issues throughout. We would encourage the ability to separate the two. I'm very cognizant of the time element and would hope maybe there's some consideration that you can do to try to separate something and still satisfy the one issue that, of expediency. So, the issue of record is important, it's important to the city, I think it is clear there is definitely an inability to separate the two, although they are very distinctly separate for purposes of the record. So, we would support something, whether, I haven't seen Commissioner Tucker's, but if there is a ability to do it for some period of time, or alternatively, if there is an ability at the end to maybe summarize for the record the sequoia issues, that could also be a possibility. But to have them together, let me put it in the positive, to keep them separate would be a positive, and we would support that.
Any other comment on the staff or Mr. Tucker's recommendation?
No, we would welcome the, a time limit of some type, simply for, this is a project that's gone on for a couple of years, and there are folks that will want to speak, so we're, hope that they have the time to do that, but as long as we monitor the repetitive nature from both sides, I think that it will have a course, I'm supportive of some time limit, I'll leave that up to your judgment. And the balance of the staff report, we're supportive of.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, I just want to state to Gary and Don, I don't think there's any new information that's going to come out in the public process. I mean, we've had reams of material, and I think each council member has, to some degree, followed that material and that information. I do know people who feel strongly one way or the other, feel compelled they have to say something, and I think to that end, we have to respect that. But I submit to you that if we've had two years of written material and oral testimony that is available to us, I'm just not anticipating any new information that night, so, and I do want to say, I don't want to discount a EIR sequoia record, but I think my concern is the inability of those citizens out there to discern one from the other. So, if somebody can stand up and say, "I'm making a sequoia comment," that would be helpful, but for us to do it separate and create the confusion that that will create in the audience is, quite candidly, too difficult for us.
Okay. Anything else, McKidric?
That's it.
Okay. Public comment is still open, if you want to speak on this item, this is the time. Mr. Bettencourt, do you want to speak on this? I didn't want to starve you, but I'm just giving you a chance. Okay, then I'm going to close public comment, let's bring it back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I do support staff's suggestion, I do support Mr. Crote's request that, that was suggested by Councilmember Rosansky, and so with that, I certainly, if we need a motion, I would preliminarily or move for that as the protocol, but it needs to have the ability to be adjusted by you as mayor, as the presiding officer that night, depending on who shows up. But I think generally, do we need a motion on this, Levon? We do. Well, then, I will make that as a motion, and I do, as part of that motion, I think the applicant needs the last five-minute wrap-up prior to the wrap-up by the homeowners' association, I have no desire to deny them of that, so that would be my vote.
Hold on, and as part of that motion, a time limit on public testimony?
Yeah, I would put a time limit on public testimony. Yeah, I'm thinking that through, I say three hours max, and that'd be it, I mean...
Second.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Let's have discussion by the council. Any other, Mr. Nichols?
I guess the question is substantial evidence that you're talking about on the sequoia portion, and I don't know, if that can be made understandable, I think that has merit. I don't, I don't know whether it can be made understandable, no.
Okay, that's, I'm forcing for me to present, and hopefully the public to comprehend. Okay, Mr. Selic?
Yeah, I don't really think it's a good idea to put a time limit on it, I think it'd be better to just leave it up to the mayor as the meeting progresses, and if the testimony starts to get redundant, then he can decide to cut off testimony then. At the Planning Commission, at the hearings I was at, we really didn't have any testimony that went on three hours, so I don't think it's really going to be a problem, and I think it just kind of looks bad to stick a time limit on it up front.
Okay. And the question is presented to me from staff, does a three hours include only public testimony, or does it include presentation, rebuttals, or is it just public testimony, the public input side? Mr. Ridgeway, you made the motion.
I did, actually, I intended that to mean just a public testimony, not the presentation, so, but I think with Ed's last comment, with the indulgence of the second, I think perhaps we're better off to just leave it to the presiding officer, I mean, we've established at least preliminarily four hours, if not more, and again, if each member reads the material that's presented to them, there will be no new facts, I'm fairly confident of that.
Well, and it's up to the mayor, me, to, in a kind way, defer repetitive public testimony on the same topic.
I'll second that motion.
In a inappropriate way, without chilling.
Well, I'll change my motion, just not put a timeframe on it if the second would agree to that.
Could it be just considered with a goal of not exceeding three hours?
Well, that, fine, a goal of not exceeding public testimony in three hours, that's fine. I don't, Ed's been there, he's been this route, so that's our goal, and that's fine.
Input from the council on that motion, revised as it is? All right, so it's time to vote. That's good. City Clerk?
Item number 19, ordinance restricting trucks on Ridge Park Road.
I'll bet you that's why these ladies are here.
Okay, who's going to give the staff report on this?
Steve Baden, Public Works Director.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you, Homer. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we're asking you to consider introducing an ordinance to the city's municipal code that will restrict trucks on Ridge Park Road, more specifically establish a weight limit of 8,000 pounds on Ridge Park Road between Newport Coast Drive and Vista Ridge Road. As you may recall, in the study session of June 28th, staff has been working with concerned parents and the school of the Newport Coast Elementary regarding their concerns regarding pedestrian safety at the intersection of Newport Coast Drive and Ridge Park Road. The city traffic engineer had some vehicle counts made, and the vehicle counts for Ridge Park Road showed that there was about 390, I mean, 3,900 vehicles per day, about 280 of them being large trucks, versus on Vista Ridge Road, I'm sorry, I mixed up the numbers there, Ridge Park Road was 6,000 vehicles per day, with 280 of them being trucks, and Vista Ridge Road was 3,900 vehicles a day, with 80 of them being large trucks. So, as you can see, there is a disparity of the amount of truck traffic on Vista Ridge versus Ridge Park Road. So, the, working with the police department and the traffic engineers regarding the safety issue, we're recommending that you enact this ordinance tonight, or actually do the, introduce this ordinance. The net effect will be that it will be in effect by the time the school opens in the fall. One change that we did make as a result of some of the testimony in the study session was that we did change the ordinance so that it does have a sunset clause in it, and that it will remain in effect till September 1st, 2008, unless it's, another ordinance is enacted that either deletes or extends that date. This was done because our information, working with the developers, that we're probably looking at about close to 30 months of additional development on top of the ridge, which would keep that volume of truck traffic in effect, so I'm sure there are some folks here tonight that want to speak to this issue, and that'll conclude my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? I have a question, why'd you pick 8,000 pounds?
We actually, I think the current city ordinance is 6,000, and unfortunately, our manufacturers are billing vehicles such as a Hummer, similar to the one Mr. Councilman Selic drives, that actually combined gross vehicle weight is, actually exceeds that, so we moved up to 8,000 pounds.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just so I can hopefully limit the amount of testimony, I'm going to make a motion for approval, and, because I think this is, it's very clear what we have to do, and hopefully...
I'll second that motion.
And hopefully, the indication from us is that we're going to approve this, so we can, I know these ladies have waited a long time agonizing over our meeting, but I want to give them some indication where we're headed.
Would that be with the three-year sunset?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other city council?
I would tend to support that motion as well.
Good. Okay. Mr. Nichols?
I would have some comments on this. I think that having the, these exclusions on during times when the school is not in session, doesn't make much sense, and I'm, I really do think that possibly if we had done a better job and put a stop sign up at Tesoro or a traffic circle or something that would cause the trucks to have to come to a stop, not be going 45 miles an hour at that point, we'd have less problems. The 10-degree slope is a problem, but most... The 10-degree slope is a problem, but most of your Newport Coast crosswalk is on the north side here, away from the coast for pedestrians. And that's really not the problem in turning the corner. I do think that, yes, we've had a couple truck problems on that road. I think that the police have sort of given notice that they're going to enforce the law to the nth degree, but I don't believe that all of our problems have been truck problems. So I... I'm not certain that we're really solving our problems here. I think we're just extending them.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Diggle?
Yes, well, how it works is you need four votes, and I believe I'm your fourth vote.
Well, good. That'll even... Maybe that'll... I mean, we want to chill the testimony, but any other comments from City Council for staff? Okay, then I'm going to open up public testimony. If you'd like to come up, here's a chance to speak on this. Okay, I'm going to... Okay, but I'm going to close public testimony. I'm going to bring it back... No, excuse me. Yes, come on up.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Dennis Labonge. I live in Newport Coast. Using your flyer and just bringing it to your attention, certainly this problem that you're dealing with tonight, you've inherited with because of some bad planning on the part of Orange County, not the city of Newport Beach. That problem is really a problem that is the developers and home builders, not our residents. It's a problem of safety of the vehicles. It's a problem of the qualifications of the drivers that are driving these vehicles. I have a question. Vista Ridge, where it crosses Newport Coast, is two lanes in width westbound. Ridge Park is three lanes in width westbound. You're actually driving these trucks into two lanes of an exit pattern rather than three that exist now. I also ask you, does this traffic ordinance fit into those legal guidelines of that narrow intersection? Vista Ridge is very narrow at the bottom there at Newport Coast. The problem is not one which should be borne by the residents. It should have been anticipated by Orange County planners, but it's now our mutual problem. I have children, and I understand the issues that are being presented by the school. I do have a question, perhaps a traffic or a public safety person here can answer. Did the Newport Coast Advisory Council have a recommendation on their 7-Eleven meeting? Sir? Uh, Mayor?
Mr. Kiff, do you want to respond to that?
The Newport Coast Advisory Committee met and asked the council if they were going to consider this action to consider the three-year sunset. They didn't adopt a position either in support or in opposition to it. But they said if you do adopt it, please do the three-year sunset.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that clarification. There are... On Vista Ridge, there are seven intersections or Irvine Ranch Water District entrances, many of which are at a steep grade as well as blind curves. But I have a suggestion. I brought this suggestion up a year ago. I was supported by the residents. Some others thought it was rather silly. But why don't we put the problem on the back of the builders and the developers, the very profitable builders and developers, and suggest one of two possible alternatives? One, we do know that these guys know how to move a lot of dirt. They certainly have rearranged our hills, and they've done a very good job of doing it. Is it possible that the builders could relocate a temporary off-ramp from State Route 73 that is just before the toll road boost at the back end of Vista Ridge? I have a overhead shot describing that. I don't know who to submit this to, but it shows the location off of 73 that there are temporary dirt four-wheel-drive roads that probably could be modified with the idea that it's temporary to produce a access road for heavy trucks.
Can we see them? Go ahead.
Continuing on, the 8,000-pound limit has been brought up is rather light. It's really going to bring up a lot of 3/4-ton and 1-ton service trucks up Vista Ridge. We're not talking about the heavy, let's say, material haulers that haul up drywall and cement and so forth. You're going to be impacting at a higher level than you are anticipating or advising, in my opinion, that you're advising our residents. The second suggestion, besides the possibility of a State Route 73 temporary off-ramp for these heavy vehicles, is again, the actions, I believe, are a result of vehicle maintenance costs and unqualified drivers. There's no question that the home builders are very profitable. We all read the newspapers today, and the home builders are scoring record profits. These home builders are very, very good at developing profits, and there are a limited number of parties that are ultimately responsible for this situation. I think the builders can impose limits on their subcontractors. They are able to control the drivers quite well via the contracts and purchase orders and general business relationships that they conduct their activity with. I would insist on highly inspected certified trucks, certified trucks, inspected by Newport Beach Police Department and/or the CHP, and they be given a tag in order to operate, and that tag's visible on their windshield. I would also insist on highly literate drivers who are qualified and licensed to access Newport Coast. I support the recommendation that we control the hours. I would support a heavy fines for violation, and I would pass any additional cost to the city for patrol and enforcement onto the home builders for the same period of time that the sunset law would be in effect. I have some other photographs which I'll submit to you, which show you the areas that I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further public comment on this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring it back to the City Council. Mr. Rosansky?
I think we have a motion. Are we voting on that?
Yeah, we do have a motion. I just want to say that the access off of Highway 73 is... It's very difficult. We have a school year coming on us, and I know it was studied by staff, and it was an alternate that really does not work. So with that, I will stand by my motion.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Since we're doing this, and I'm not sure this exists or not, are any particular findings need to be made for, on a traffic basis, to do this? No, not at all? Good. We're clear sailing there? Any other comment by the council? Okay, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
Thank you for being patient, lady. Ladies. And gentlemen, I'm sorry.
City Clerk?
Item number 20, Mariners Mile Waterfront Walkway. Approval of Amendment Number Two to Professional Services Agreement with Cash &amp; Associates.
Who's going to give the staff report?
Mr. Batum, once again.
Okay. Mr. Batum?
Thank you, Homer. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we're asking you to approve an amendment which is actually for professional services with Cash &amp; Associates. And this is actually the next step in the... The next logical step in moving forward with the feasibility of constructing a public walkway along Mariners Mile Waterfront from Newport Boulevard to the Bay Club. As you probably recall, in March of 2004, there was a study session, and we brought to you a study that showed that it would be feasible to construct a walkway along that waterfront area. But the majority of difficulty would be around the loss of dock space. And one of the options that was proposed by Cash &amp; Associates was that we investigate moving the pierhead line out into the bay so that there will be no loss in dock space and that there would be sufficient space to wind a walkway through those properties and ultimately extend from Newport Boulevard down to the Bay Club. On June of 2004, you amended their contract to look into that for us. And the results are that they're coming back to us, and they're telling us that they can move this project forward. They've had a lot of discussion with... Preliminary discussions with regulatory agencies, and they indicate that they've been very supportive, and there doesn't seem to be any huge obstacles to this effort. And that they're bringing proposals to us to recommend that we move forward with this project. And the next step would be the preparation of the initial study for SEQA and also the preparation of documents to support the SEQA determination, some property owner meetings and coordination, and also looking at actual processing of permits to the various regulatory agencies to get more of a formal comment. The amount of money that they're asking for to do all these services totals $175,750. And tonight's staff is recommending that you consider this and give us direction on whether or not you want to proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah. Don Webb and I have been on this kind of this ad hoc committee meeting with the engineer. What's not said in this report, and it's really important to note, is that the regulatory agencies historically in Newport Harbor have not agreed to any pier line movement to increase dock space. But clearly, Randy Mason, who does this nationally, felt very optimistic under the circumstances with which we were moving forward, and that was because it was a public walkway, public access, and even the Army Corps of Engineers for... They usually just say no, really opened the door for this to happen. And with that, I know we need to open it up, but I am going to make a motion for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Further City Council comment? Mr. Rosansky?
I just have kind of a question about this. And I know that the goal of this project is to ultimately maybe build this waterfront walkway. Assuming that we... Let's say that doesn't happen, but we do get the pier head line extended out, do we have an obligation to allow the folks who have docks that can now be extended another, I don't know what it is... 20 feet. 20 feet. To... Do we have an affirmative obligation to allow them to do so? And is there... What's the process whereby... Because we're expending a significant amount of money to accomplish this, and if we don't, but there will be people who may benefit by the actual action. I mean, is there going to be a way to maybe recoup our costs because of the significant benefit that they'll derive from that? Or... And our goal is to extend the pier head line out to put in this walkway so that we don't hurt these people and probably mitigate our acquisition expenses. But assuming that, let's say, it just doesn't go through, I just want to know where we'll be in that world.
Mr. Mayor and council, this application to relocate or actually push the pier head line out into the bay would be contingent upon us building that facility. I would imagine we would be conditioned that that pier head line would not be allowed to be moved unless we move forward with the project.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, staff? I have two. If we're... So I understand this would start down near the arches component of the bay and extend to basically the Seascop base?
Well, I think now we're maybe going to talk about the Bay Club because...
Or say the Bay Club. So I have two questions. One, if people are going to use this, they're going to park somewhere, where are they going to... Where is the additional parking going to be for the people to be able to use it, unless they're all going to use it on bikes or walk there? And secondly, what's the expected cost of building this elevated ramp for a mile and a half? Where would that money, see where it would come from?
Can I just...
No, go ahead. It doesn't matter who answers.
Well, I know Steve's been in some of the meetings. Actually, Randy Mason from Cash &amp; Associates brought that up. And I know most of you know that there are ongoing discussions to adding parking on the north side of the highway, perhaps at Riverside Drive, to accommodate this walkway. It's not necessarily an elevated as much as it is at seawall height, probably on piers. And let me say, with the 20-feet additional out, it allows some difficult transitions that were very costly to be actually less expensive. But Randy, I know I met, and I think Steve was there, we met with planning, planning, and hopefully the general plan amendment will look at some additional parking, which is in Mariners Mile, because it's already underparked. It's always been underparked. So it will take a coordinated effort. I think that's an excellent question, and actually is. I mean, it will take a coordinated effort by the... All the merchants in the area getting together with some type of parking structure on the north side, and probably we're going to look at some type of pedestrian bridge over Pacific Coast Highway. Mr. Batum and I have actually met with Caltrans. Caltrans has no problem with that, by the way, as long as it's designed correctly. That was somewhat of a surprise to me. So the pieces all do have to come together. It's just a long-range, slow process.
Mr. Mayor, anything to add to that?
I think...
No, if you don't, you don't.
Councilor answered very well.
That's good. Any other comment from City Council? Yes, Mr. Nichols?
Will this... If this is at the pier line, won't this basically cut off view from all the restaurants along there?
Which one?
You're speaking of this being up at pier line, not down at...
No, no, no. Mr. Nichols, pier head line is the final piling in the water where the docks go. The pier head...
So will this be down at water level or...
It'll be at the...
Three feet above relatively? Or is this going to be up at the level of the seawall?
Seawall.
So it'll be the top level, the top of the seawall?
Yes.
And so it will be directly in line of anybody that has views seating in restaurants along there, will it not?
Oh, they'll love seeing their buddies walk by the windows.
That's essentially where it'll be.
There are currently a number of sections of walkway which allow people to walk in front of windows. And so this is, right now, today.
Yeah.
And they are... A person walks by, and there are a couple restaurants that have said they didn't particularly care for the idea, and there were others that said, hey, we're glad to get the visibility. So that the extension of the pier head line, which is the subject, the main subject of the study here, is necessary to make sure that we have the ability to construct the walkway adjacent to the bulkhead without impacting the boat storage areas that are there. We want to work towards giving the property owners that have the docks and piers and slips there the opportunity to be equal, to be given what they have today, and maybe even a little bit extra in exchange for having the walkway through there.
Basically, we're going to give them the pier length that they have now, but at an extended distance.
A little farther out. That's correct.
Mayor Protem, have you considered what kind of surface this walkway would be?
That's a design detail, but I know that you've had some floating dock experiments recently, and those are somewhat... Those aren't the type of structure that we would be considering. This would be something that would have a sub... A surface that would be equivalent to a sidewalk surface that you'd be walking down, so that even if you're in high-heel shoes, you should be able to navigate it.
I wasn't the one in the high heels, but I know what you're saying.
I understand.
Okay. Any other comment? I have one additional comment. If we build this, is there a chance that people that do have their views impacted or abut this can take on the city if they don't agree with it and just say no, or condemnation or some sort of public taking-type damage?
Well, the... Mr. Mayor, the project, I would imagine, you know, by extending the pier head line out, it allows us to put it in essentially what's over tidelines, which is already under our control. You know, as you might already see in the proposal, we do plan to meet with those owners and try to minimize their concerns. Obviously, there are restaurants that are different levels, different heights. We're going to see if we can work with them to try to mitigate their concerns. But as far as if we go through the normal project process, hearings and SEQA and all that, you sure, I guess that someone could challenge us at some point, but if we follow the normal project process, the SEQA process, and all of our... the normal project process, the SEQA process, and, and all of our outreach...
No, I'm not talking about SEQA. I'm talking about public taking. You're taking my view...
Oh, it won't be a public taking, because they'll be all...
Anything like that, oh, that's my point. It's more of an environmental objection to it, rather than somebody saying, you've taken my view, you owe me 100 grand. All right, none of that. Okay, good. Thanks. I don't have any more questions. Any other questions here, comments? Okay, then let's, let's vote on the motion.
They didn't open it to public?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Public comment, please? That's correct.
Jim Hiller, Newport Beach. Public access. Well, hopefully the city's not going to do, do what they did to me in the Grand Canal area, they put in a ladder for public access. So, I'd like to remind the city that public access is also for those in wheelchairs, so do not forget that. And also, there was a comment about bicycles. The city might want to address that and make sure, well, possibly put some turns in there so it's not a speedway right through for bicycles. If not, possibly make it like Babo Island where, or the peninsula where they're not supposed to be on the boardwalk. The, we're talking safety here, as well as make sure that the, the bone owners know that more people will be walking by there, grand-looking, but there are also people that look and also take, so there's that possibility. So, people need to be wary of that. And other than that, if the general public likes it, then I don't see anything wrong with it, so long as it's safe and everybody's happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and any, if there's no other City Council input, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
City Clerk?
Items removed from the consent calendar. We have one item, number four, which is the purchase of surveillance monitoring and recording system for the Balboa Yacht Basin contract with post-alarm systems.
Okay. What's our protocol? Staff report on this, or is the staff report pretty self-explanatory?
I think it's self-explanatory. It was pulled by...
No, that's right. I just want to make, be fair to the, Mr. Hiller, who pulled it. Okay, Mr. Hiller?
Thank you very much. Jim Hiller, Newport Beach. The, this is mainly, well, it says Balboa Yacht Basin, well, it's mainly the Harbor Resources location. As I understand it, it, the location is upstairs, and is that, I'm not sure exactly if that is going to be the place where this surveillance equipment computer system is going to be housed. The problem I have is that it doesn't look like the general public is going to stop the city from demolishing and replacing this city hall. So, the, as I understand it, the Harbor Resources is scheduled to move to the city hall when it is converted, or re-destructed, or reconstructed. And that means that the surveillance system is there until Harbor Resources is relocated. The problem I have is put it one place and then have to move it. Maybe it needs to be implemented in a place where it will stay for a longer period of time. Also, if there's 140, 174 slips and garages, 45 garages and three apartments and two offices, one being the, I would assume, the Harbor Resources, the, the people that own the boats, have they been notified that they're going to be under surveillance and under the watchful eye of Big Brother? I think that that should be brought to their attention. I don't see any documentation in this that has been brought to the, the property owners of the boats, though they probably would like to have their boats be safe. However, it's kind of an obscure location. A lot of people don't even know it's there. The, the people of, that have the boats, they're going to be looked at 24/7, and it's also a temporary thing. If I am not mistaken, if the, because the city hall is going to be remodeled, then Harbor Resources is going to be relocated. So, this is a temporary thing. Is it a, a testing of the security system so that when it's put on the city hall that it'll prove to be working? I don't know. However, this seems like $31,695 for a temporary surveillance doesn't seem to be worth it. Thank you.
Move the action. Any other public comment? We're going to close the public hearing then. Okay, let's bring this, bring this matter back. There's been a motion and a second. Have a vote. City Clerk?
Wait a minute. Councilmember Rosansky?
Oh, excuse me.
Motion carries.
Okay, City Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions of reconsideration? Okay, hearing that, stand adjourned. Thanks.